And we were in fact sworn in. How to fix this?
Can participants hear us now?
Yes, I heard that.
Great. Okay, we're still being heard?
Yes, you are.
Okay, let's roll. Good job, Adrian Wu.
Apologies, well done.
So, if I may. We're speaking of the passing of Dave Ross, and he is a very talented, brilliant fellow. Loved the town. Missed by, of course, mostly by his wife Nancy. But what I think the gift that he gave to the town more than anything else was his ability to disarm sometimes heated debate and divisive conversation and really cut through to the salience of the issue and stated in a way that the issue could be heard and could be moved forward. The issue could be moved forward in a productive and civil manner. And that is going to be, is going to be greatly missed by. We only recommend that we all move forward tonight and all of our nights with with Dave and Nancy, of course, in mind. If there's anybody who can speak.
No, super missed. It's hard to put into words how much he means to the town and has been an example to me in his work on the ASCC. As you said, he always found a way to say what needed to be said, but in a decent polite way.
All right, thank you. We've gone through unagendized matters.
Chair, sorry to, we have taken attendance. We did have one request for a reasonable accommodation. Yes.
The front is an office and the back is an acre that's undeveloped. And we applied on February fourteenth for a four lot subdivision. Be one lot would be where the office is, and then there would be three single family dwellings. And Adrian actually has those drawings. And these are compliant with everything in the code. I heard from Adrian on Thursday that this was a mixed use district and the AP regulations wouldn't apply. And the mixed use regulations would apply. And the effect is we wouldn't, I'm not quite sure that all the effects, but I know we couldn't do two lots there. And I've been told from the beginning that all the AP uses would be kept. And it's actually stated that way in the housing element. If I can read that. Permitted uses include residential and all principal permitted uses in the AP zone. And then it quotes the code, and it's on page one thirty-two of the housing element. So I know this parcel was very contested before I was involved, but I understand that a density was a major concern. And I would think that three lots would be certainly the least density which was ever discussed. And I think having three lots would blend right into the neighborhood and be very attractive. And more so than two or three duplexes up on top. So I simply ask that the regulations, the zoning amendment be modified to add the language from the housing element. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate. Let's say just for the people who are going to be transcribing today's proceedings, can you please state your I mean, and your address? Could I ask you just to state your name and your address? So for the purposes of the
Please sing. T H E S I N G. Sixty-four Alejandra Avenue, African.
Thank you so much. So I would suggest that we take this, mine, circle it, and that we'll come back to it during the hearings and the response. If that's acceptable.
Yes.
I suspect that there will be a number of issues like that, big and small, that we'll be reviewing over the course of the evening. My thought before we get into the staff presentation, the staff, I believe, you won't have a presentation?
Yes, I do. I want to mention we have a hand up for oral communications.
For oral communications. Okay.
Can I proceed with that?
By all means.
So firstly, we have Rita. Rita, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. This is, you know, the beginning of the year, once again, twenty twenty-four. And you've had a couple of meetings that have been canceled. And we have lots of work. I mean, the first and last thing everyone's thinking about is building in this town and the condition of the roads, the condition of the infrastructure, all the things that are up under the planning commission. I'm aware that we only have an interim planning person, and that person's not even on the dais tonight. But there's lots of work that needs to be done, questions that the public has. This is our only forum because we have no one to write, we have no one to call. We have no one to answer us back, except possibly at this meeting. And even if we ask a question at this meeting, we won't be able to get an answer back, but at least we can hear each other in a place where people can at least hear what our thoughts are. So I really hope moving forward that the ASCC continues to have meetings, not just be canceled. And the planning commission has meetings. You know, we are the people that live in this town, and yes, we don't have a planning person full time right now. That's an outside person. You know, please, the commission, meet, have meetings. Talk to the residents, listen to the residents. We have a lot of issues. There's lots of problems with the Hawthorns, with parking, all these different things that touch on exactly what you do under your charter for your commission. So please don't leave us high and dry. Have some meetings so that we can communicate through you for our needs so that they can then be presented to the town council. People, five people that we voted for, but we can't do certain things directly to them. They have to be come through you, which means it has to get on your agenda. And we don't have a person to talk to, so this is our only way. So please, don't cancel more meetings unless there's a big vacation someplace, and we're all invited. Thank you.
I'm not aware of that vacation, but I'll let you know. So we're about to have a staff presentation on this is usually a little thingy at the bottom here.
That's just for panelists. Sorry. Okay, all right. Okay, I see a number ending in seven, five, six, two. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Caroline Vertonghen. I'm so glad that you finally have a meeting, and I echo everything that Rita was saying. It's one of my concerns that I have mentioned a couple of times, not just to your department, but also to town council. As you know, the housing element has one component that is so important. And that is the data from the utilities companies that is needed in order to support more affordable housing or any project in this town. And we have come, it's our experience that has been neglected during the housing elements of the cycle fifteen. And we have not seen any data to support the new housing element. So it's so crucial that we start working on this because, yes, so many people are desperate need of basic utilities. And the second point that I would like to make is, we used to have a process, and every project that was approved to true CUP or an amended CUP would have an annual reporting, and we have not seen that for at least two years. So we're behind on that as well. It's important that those projects come forward because we have, we continue to build, we continue to approve projects, and nothing is being done. So thank you, and thanks for your good work. Keep on it. We're all in it together. Thank you.
May I ask if there are any further unagendized matters?
There's more people. Yeah, we do have one more hand in scene.
And I'm sure I don't see what your
Go ahead, Kristi.
Kristi Corvina. I've logged into, logged in as a panelist.
Kristi, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm here. I was concerned today when I did go to the, or yesterday, the Trails Committee. And it was told to us that the Hawthorns project would go directly to the town council. And I would like the opportunity for you to review whatever they bring over to you. And I would like to hear your discussion on the Hawthorne options and not have it go directly to town council. So that would be my first comment. And then I think I could save some other comments for later. I do think that the residents need more time to sit with some of this. For example, they may not know what a low barrier navigation center is. And I see that in the document. So I'd like you to explain that to the people of Portola Valley. And please define transitional housing so they understand that as well. And what does it mean that the housing element is substantially accepted? So I assume after you vote on it, then it will be accepted. Understand the word substantial, if you can clarify, please. So on December twentieth, the Planning Commission meeting with the people. Well, the opt-in program is now, back on December twentieth, the opt-in program, which allows the program to end after the goal of twelve units had been reached. That was just December twentieth. So today is March twentieth. So we've only had three months or a month and a half to really learn about the changes such as twenty units to twenty-three units for multi-use and multifamily. And I think you should really take some time to explain to people what that means and what is concessions and when could a developer get concessions and how is bonus density used if we have a hundred percent below market value building? Can they get fifty percent more units on that building by using load density bonus law? So I really feel like we need to do what MROSD did, and they took us to town hall, and they allowed us to talk and listen to presentations and really learn. And then say, hey, let's go have a picnic afterwards and throw frisbees out on the lawn and bring your own picnic. I mean, let's, let's make this a learning and fun for our, you know, planning and land use planning is difficult, but we can educate a little bit more thoroughly and a little bit better with postcards home. We can't assume everybody will be on TV forum to learn everything. And we've only had two and a half months to absorb the changes that happened, which is one hundred and thirty-five, you know, designated opt-in options of which my house is one and all around me. Every direction I have opt-in, including myself. So you can imagine how I feel. And I want you to put yourself into that position and how you would feel. So please, please gather us more often. Utilize your town center and educate and don't rush. We don't deserve to be rushed. We, we drive down Alpine every day, and we're going to see these sites every day. And I want to like the sites I see. I want to be involved in how could opt-in be developed? How, if you're doing objectives, ask the residents that want to be involved to be involved, not just staff, because we live here. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it for hands.
All right. Well, in that case, why don't we move on to our staff presentation for our first agendized item? This evening has the potential for being quite a long evening or not so long. I'm going to recommend that if we reach the time of nine thirty, that we take a check-in. And my goal is to wrap up this meeting by about ten o'clock tonight. And at nine thirty, we can see where we are in the process and talk about potential paths for moving forward, whether it's a resolution, whether it is specific vote on the matter that's on the on the zoning code that's before us or to continue ourselves to future meeting. But I'm not interested in having a meeting that goes till two o'clock in the morning. Seeing some, some approval in that direction. So with that benediction, let me first turn it over to staff and also to recognize, Adrian, that there are two members of the planning staff right now, and I believe that when we started, there were six.
That's correct.
I appreciate you. We appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to go off the agenda, could I ask for an update on when we're going to get a new planning director and what's being done on that?
Thank you very much. No.
I've been withholding, but you're going off.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your endeavor to join me. But no, we should have that conversation in staff reports following the matter that we have to plan this. I just wanted to compliment you and recognize that you're in both of your own challenged position. And with that, if you can please go forward.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Targ. I appreciate you saying those things, encouraging for our staff. All right, so I'm just going to get going on our presentation tonight for the matter before the commission. You're considering the zoning code and zoning map amendments, and if you see fit, you may make a recommendation of approval or you know, to council. So we'll go from there. So quickly, meeting format, just, we're going to start off with my presentation, then we'll go to commission questions. Then we'll hear from the public. Then the commission's going to have a fulsome discussion. And then, of course, if we get to that stage, we'll discuss a potential recommendation of adoption. Pretty straightforward, kind of repeating myself, but this is what we're here to do this evening. I just want to take a brief moment to mention the technical team that's been toiling away on, on this draft for some time. Myself, John Biggs, our interim planner, he is indeed running out of hours for the town, so he's conserving a little bit of time so he can do transition once we have a permanent director hired. Catherine, our interim attorney, town attorney is right here with us tonight. Kristi Bascom is part of her team. Kristi's been helping us a lot as well. Kristi couldn't attend, but she's been a great support throughout. And then we also have Monica Sidlick and Roger Eastman. They're from Lisa Wise Consulting, Inc., and they are our code gurus, helped us draft all of this. So they'll be on hand this evening for, for any technical questions from the commission. So just a bit of background, this is in your staff report, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. Reminder that the commission adopted a resolution recommending approval of the housing element, and that was in December. Then on January twenty-fourth, town council accepted that recommendation and adopted. We sent that over promptly to the, to HCD for review, and then on January thirtieth, they deemed our element in substantial compliance with state law. In their letter of approval, they urged us to continue timely and effective implementation of all of our housing element programs. And of course, chief among them is adopting zoning. New zoning. So just to, to talk a little bit more about the necessity of a timely adoption of code amendments. Right after we finished basking in the glow of our certification, we did get a letter from the Housing Accountability Department and the chief herself, actually, and she pointed out to us that because we didn't adopt by the original statutory deadline of January twenty twenty-three, we don't have much time to put into place our zoning code amendments. And in fact, they were supposed to be done by January thirty-first. The importance here is because we have several sites on our adequate sites inventory in the housing element. And if we don't rezone them, they're not considered available to be developed as per the plan in the housing element that we've indicated at specific densities and affordability levels. We know all of this. We know that, you know, we were delayed in our submission. We went through a process, and, and that was a decision that staff and town decision makers, you know, made together. So it's, this letter was nothing new. It's just sort of reinforcing what we, what we already understand. We did get back to them on March fourth outlining our plan for moving forward the zoning code amendments, beginning with tonight's meeting, so they, they know our general timeline. We didn't get a response back, but we weren't surprised about that. But we do feel optimistic that they're understanding we are, we are pursuing good faith efforts to get this done. And we did also let them know that we have a lot of staffing transitions. And there's a lot of associated resource constraints that come along with that. And basically, we were saying, you know, we're trying our best. So a reminder, and this was a little ways back, the Planning Commission has done some previous work on the code amendments already. This was a series of three meetings in late twenty twenty-two. At the time, the commission considered mixed use and multifamily zoning districts. We looked at basic concepts and standards, general setbacks, lot minimums, those sorts of things. We also talked at that time about codifying the affiliated housing program. We did make some progress at that time, but it was ultimately decided that there was just too much going on, and the town needed to focus first and foremost on getting the housing element done. And then we would circle back to the zoning code amendments. The town needed to focus first and foremost on getting the housing element done, and then we would circle back to the zoning code amendments. So this is just a snapshot of of the amendments, these are all the chapters that are being touched. I put a little orange star. Next to the chapters that I would consider a little bit more significant in terms of of the alterations being made. In the case of. Chapter eighteen point one five, multifamily and eighteen point two three mixed use, these are new chapters, of course, these are new. Zoning designations for the town. And we're putting forth associated development standards with those new designations. Firstly, the multifamily residential district that we're considering. There's two proposed zoning districts here and they vary by density type, so we have R M F. Four, which allows two to four dwelling units per acre, that applies to the Glen Oaks housing site. And then we have R M F twenty to twenty-three, which is a a range of twenty to twenty-three dwelling units. And that applies to the Ladera Church affiliated housing site. So. In this chapter, we've laid out basic development standards. Addressing density, lot width, lot coverage, building footprint. Those sorts of items, we've also introduced some illustrated objective design standards. And they get quite specific and talk about. Items such as upper story setbacks, building articulation, facade composition. So it really sort of gets into the nitty gritty of how we want these structures to look. And, you know, it is. Worth pointing out and it's obvious to everyone, of course, but this is a notable increase in density for the town. And so we're trying to be quite meticulous in the design standards so that. We can have as much control as we can over what gets built in this town. So we've tried to address those considerations and potentially concerns that could arise in these design standards. So next is our mixed use district. It allows for residential development. Between four to six dwelling units per acre. Of course, it can be mixed use, there can be a commercial component as well. This zoning applies to forty-three seventy and forty-three eight-eight Alpine Road. Forty-three eight-eight is a pipeline project, it's Willow Commons. And we, it was requested of us by the the property owner to go ahead and rezone the site just for continuity. Since it would, so it wouldn't be a little island stuck in between two sites. And then, of course, forty-three nine-four Alpine Road is the other site that's gonna be rezoned. And this zone will allow for up to a hundred percent of the floor area to be dedicated to residential if if so desired. So again, this district, we're proposing basic development standards such as density, F A R, lot width. Building footprint. Again, we have some illustrated objective design standards to. Increase the readability and to better understand what the code is laying out. The illustrations are helpful in that respect, our code is. Quite old in terms of when it was last overhauled, the sixties is my understanding, and at the time, we didn't actually have the ability to insert graphics. So this is a more modern approach and will will improve the usability, really.
The nineteen sixties, does that clarify?
Right, to be to be clear. The design standards here address design for the non-residential portions of the projects, if if that exists. Such as ceiling height, ground level transparency, those kinds of aspects. So if we have a mixed use project that involves multifamily and commercial. We have design standards to address the commercial and then we would use the multifamily standards to address the residential aspect of the project. So it is kind of difficult to. Conceptualize all of these technical standards that are laid out in this in this package. We even enumerate certain specific standards and then you think to yourself, well, what's the significance of that number, where does it come from? And really, I would say it's. It's based on best practices, it's the consultants that do this work every day for a living or are advising us on these sorts of things. In particular, what we're trying to control for is things such as building massing, upper story setbacks. And so we're gonna be allowing up to three stories in this zone, but we don't want to be looking at a monolithic. You know, box, basically. And so what we want, for example, is the third story. To step back a little bit, sort of melt back into the building and not be so intrusive visually. It's also gonna allow for increased flexibility in roof form and design. So you can see there's a series of illustrations here on what we're after and what we're trying to avoid. So here we're looking at facade articulation and entrance standards. And and again, you can see, if you look at the top level, the far right, it's just sort of one big structure, I mean, there's a little interest on the roof line, but that's it. Otherwise, it's just sort of. It feels heavy, it's it's hard to articulate, but but that's that's kind of what I'm getting at. It, so this is gonna prevent that monolithic design, it's gonna protect a budding lower intensity residential uses, so. If you have a lower level, a lower. Scaled structure next door, you're not gonna, the new structure won't feel like it's looming over the existing one. So it's also gonna allow for building dimensions that support the maximum density, so when we talk about a project that has a maximum density allowed by the zone. How can that be done in? An elegant way, to to put it like that, in an attractive way. That doesn't feel, that when you look at it, it doesn't actually feel as dense as it is. And then, of course, we're also trying to control for visual interest as well and prevent too much shadowing from the new structures. So the next major chapter addition is affiliated housing. And that is currently located and administered from the twenty fifteen housing element. And the intent here is to move it out of the housing element and codify it. This is a pro, a program that's been around in town for some time, has a lot of support, it's been successful. And we're trying to expand the program, get some new partners. And get more housing within this program, so it's best to put that in the code and lay out some standards. So that we can encourage its implementation. So it's going to be consistent with our housing element. It also lays out a total number of units because we did do some studies with some of our current partners, so Sequoies and Christchurch, for example. We had some unit numbers that we're expecting from them during the planning period. So we've also expanded off-street parking. And we've included new standards for duplexes and multifamily dwellings. So we currently have a ratio table that exists in the code, so based on the use type, you're expected to provide X amount of parking spaces. Per number of bedrooms or per square footage if it's a commercial use. So we've added into that existing table for our new zoning districts. And also to address supportive and transitional housing and emergencies, emergency shelters, those are updates we've also had to make. In the zoning code to align ourselves with state legislation. In addition, we have brand new standards for bicycle parking as well. So just a couple other amendments to call out, we have made a number of changes to the definitions section. Mostly just for continuity. If we've made changes elsewhere in the chap, in the in the code, we wanted to carry that through to the definitions chapter. And then, of course, we're looking at our zoning map this evening, and this is actually really exciting because if, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words, you take a look at our current map on the left. And then we have this new beautiful colorful map on the right. So it's really gonna help with usability, I think, I'm really happy to see it as a planner. We're gonna be adding in a full legend, so you can actually read the thing. And it's gonna be calling out the new locations of our multifamily and mixed use districts. And of course, our affiliated housing combining district is called out as well on the map. Okay, just a note on the opt-in diversification program, I know it's a it's a hot topic right now in town and that we have a lot of concerned residents. It is not included in any kind of detail in the amendments. The program lives in the housing element, this cycle's housing element. And that was a practical decision because this is a program that is driven by this cycle. You know, depending on how the program goes, if it's a wild success and everybody loves it, then we can. You know, put it into our next housing element, perhaps we at that point codify it if it makes sense to do so. Or if we don't get many units out of it, it's not going well, maybe we do away with the program, so. Well, we don't really know the ultimate outcome of the program, there's no reason to codify it. So that's why we're just leaving it in the housing element where it is. We do mention it twice in the draft amendments. And that's to clarify that if a parcel's already developed under S B nine, it is not eligible for the opt-in program. That was something we included in the housing element, and of course, we have a certified housing element, so H C D understands that. And it's also briefly mentioned in the off-street parking. Just to clarify that parking may be further regulated by the opt-in program itself. A reminder on next steps for the program, we've set a target of establishing objective design standards in June. And we would hope to kick off the program by September. Oh, twenty twenty-five, I apologize, twenty twenty-five, yep, sorry about that. So we have lots of time, you know, it's it's to to be thoughtful about this, to spend lots of time with Planning Commission to get it right and A S C C to get these objective design standards right. We have started in a Rada list, just tracking little. Editing errors that have been pointed out to us so far, so we we welcome that from the commission if there's any more that we need to be aware of. And then if members of the public want to add to that, too, they're welcome to to email the town and we'll keep a running list. And then we'll, instead of tinkering with the draft again, we would, we just send the Rada over to Town Council and. Note that these are the changes that will be reflected in the final draft. So next steps, once Planning Commission has made a recommendation, Town Council will schedule for Town Council review. Amendments to the zoning code are a legislative action, so Town Council is going to adopt an ordinance and there's a first and second reading for that. We hope to get Town Council started on that process in April, we've indicated that in our response letter to H C D. That we got from the Enforcement Division. So that's what we're targeting, we're hopeful those are, those will be our next steps. That concludes my presentation, we welcome any clarifying questions from the commission.
Are there? Any clarifications?
I have a few, and this is maybe for one of the consultants. I like those pictures that you had to show buildings that are kind of too bulky and then ones that look. Look pretty good. When, and oh, I'm very glad that consultants that do this for a living have come up with the. Kind of legal definitions, because I think we started to embark on this a year or two ago and I could tell it was gonna be. Very challenging for people that don't do it all the time to. Figure out how to write it in a way. You know, that was sensible. I'd love to hear more. Probably from the consultants on how this package of numbers came to be. And what other towns use it, you know, when you look through all these numbers. You think, oh, should we be reviewing, maybe it shouldn't be thirty feet, maybe it should be every twenty-five feet, we set back. Eight feet instead of six feet, I'd love to hear how these came. To be as a package and also maybe advice on what. Aspects we should dial into, like which numbers. You know, we care about Portola Valley and how things look. What, are there any numbers we should kind of specifically tune into? And then the opposite question is, how onerous are these? Rules if we would like. To the extent some residents would like some lower cost housing in town. Do these numbers, do builders look at these numbers and go, no way could I build anything, or do they look at these and go? Yeah, yeah, as long as I know in advance, I can deal with these, I'd love to just hear more about the. Package of those detailed numbers.
So Monica, if you wanted to talk a little bit about what informed the process, that would be helpful.
Certainly, thank you, Adrian. So. A number of. Sort of factors went into the development of these standards. As you know, we're, we're looking toward implementing the housing element, really, so.
You're cutting out, can you make sure you're right near your microphone, please?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm gonna. Pardon me, I'm switching things around a bit here. Okay, let me know if I'm still hard to hear. So a number of things went into, great, thanks. The development of these standards, as you know, there was a bit of a back and forth between the the drafting of the housing element and the drafting of these zoning amendments. So. We, we started by looking at key sites and the. The density and the number of units that the town projects and would like to support on those sites. And so we we tested out, okay, with this density, this density, how much building bulk and math do we need on this site? And there were a number of sites, and those sites changed along the way, as you know. But we really started with the the real sites that the town's gonna be looking at. And given the number of units that is sort of the goal, how much mass is there? And then to maintain the sort of pattern of development that you see elsewhere in the town. In terms of breaking up building massing, what, sort of where did that get us? How, how much articulation and and sort of building separation could be realistically required? To be consistent with build development patterns, but also support the the amount of building that we need and want. So that that was a large sort of driving factor behind the development of these standards. Along with some best practices and just sort of what we know to be good standards for, let's say, building entrances and. Roof design that's that's sort of, that's workable for developers. In terms of which standards are maybe too onerous, I'd like to remind the commission that. You know, if the developer wants to. To build a number of affordable units, then they're looking to make this feasible. The state already sort of has in place a system, as you know, through the density bonus program to wave away. Standards that really make it impossible. So if there are standards in terms of. Really anything, it's up to the developer to decide if it's like, oh, the the window details are just gonna drive costs up too much that I'm not gonna be able to do it, well, then. Don't worry about it, essentially. So it's sort of a number of things. But really rooted in the sites themselves. And then our understanding of the built form that is, that the community is used to seeing and and wants to see more of.
Thanks. And maybe a related question, I think I understood, Adrian, that. You said Willow's Commons will be rolled into the mixed use. And of course, that design has already been approved and had a lot of state mandates on it because of the type of facility. But if, if it were a market rate unit. Would those buildings fit? All these mixed, the mixed use as currently written, is that an example of a building that fits into these rules or? Would it not really?
Well.
Yeah, all these design guidelines, articulation, type of window.
Well, it's true that the project did predate these standards, so that's, that's a good question. And there's, we wouldn't be able to do anything about that since it's an existing project, I was just gonna point out the use itself, which is a hundred percent residential. And that that is within the acceptable uses of of mixed use, you can have a one hundred percent residential project. But I I admittedly have not studied the approved design and whether or not it would, it would work. I also just wanted to note that the property owner actually requested the mixed use designation.
I think that's all my questions for right now.
My first question is about the. Developable area, which is a concept that's in the housing element, but I didn't see in the zoning code. So taking Glen Oaks as an example, the. So taking Glen Oaks as an example, the, the lot is 17 acres. And so if that were two to four units per acre, it'd be 34 to 68. But in our housing element, we say that out of the 17, there's four developable acres. So that gives us 16 units. So just in general, how would that, how would that be dealt with? In terms of, you know, determining what's developable and how the densities apply.
So we studied that site in cooperation with, with the existing owners to sort of land on what we thought would be a reasonable number of units. Taking the straight acreage of a site and then multiplying it by the density isn't particularly instructive just because the site, we know no site is 100% developable unless it's flat and has no trees and, you know. So when we assessed the site, we looked at the setbacks. So the scenic corridor setback applies. There's a significant creek setback that applies at the rear. So it was a combination of looking at real site constraints and being realistic about what's the actual footprint that could be developed. And then talking with the whole, excuse me, the landowner about building type and density type. And so we wanted to be realistic about, you know, what, what they would be apt to do and what would be acceptable to the community. So that's how we landed on that number.
I guess my question is really in terms of like a, get a project that we're reviewing. And then if I just look at the zoning code, it doesn't say anything about developable area. Yeah. So how does it work from like a technical review standpoint?
So we would have to go by the lot minimums and the setbacks. That's what would start us off with what's actually developable, like that, those baked in standards are what tell us what is developable. So I think you're asking, why don't, why don't we explicitly state, use the terminology developable?
Yes.
I think, I think just because in going through the assessment of the parcel, the outcome in terms of what can be built is the developable. But if, if you perceive that, that lack of terminology in there to be problematic, we can, we can talk about. Yeah, I should call in Monica if you, if you do want to jump in.
Yes. Thank you, Adrian. So as Adrian mentioned, we did discuss this and we noted that this sort of goes back to the back and forth between the, and the drafting of the housing element and the drafting of the zoning amendments. And during that process, there are a lot of conversations that where the team sort of wanted to determine, okay, how many units can we realistically expect for the purposes of the housing element to put it inside in short range? And so what we determined, please correct me if I'm wrong, Adrian. For that, that Glen Oaks site, because the site is a very wonky shape. And it was determined that there's sort of the, the certain number of units that really we want to see on that, on that site. It makes sense to take that language that's currently in the housing element that says, okay, for the site, the Glen Oaks site, we're assuming that this is the developable area and sort of calculate the density based on that. But that's sort of an exception. And so that we can certainly put in the zoning code and that's specific to that one site. But in general, when we say site is six billion units an acre, four billion units an acre, it's not, that's not calculated based on like subtracting scenic corridor setbacks. It's not, it's not like a judgment, well, this is what we consider developable. It's, is the whole parcel. But again, for that Glen Oaks site, it sounds like the, the best solution is to take that language from the housing element and put it directly in the code so that that carries over.
Yeah. And maybe we can revisit and discussion, but I guess my question is following on that. Would, would it be reasonable to have just stayed explicitly in the zoning code, something along the lines of the minimax densities applied to the developable area as specified in the housing element? Or other site specific analysis?
For that one site, yes, I think it does make sense. But I don't think so, it, it, not in general, not for other sites. Like when we say the, the mixed use is up to six billion units an acre. We're not, we're not saying, well, if we subtract certain, on certain areas and then we calculate that, then we get to, then, then we calculate the six billion snaker. It's, we're counting the whole, the whole site. What I'm saying is that because that was worked out specifically for Glen Oaks, we would just use that determination just for that one site.
Does that make sense, Ronnie?
It doesn't entirely make sense to me. And also it's not only Glen Oaks, there's a number of sites that have developable area. Maybe we should revisit and discussion?
Sure. If I may add one note onto that. The zoning code does refer back to the AH program or just, does, I'm sorry, some sites, some sites are subject to the, the AH, which is elsewhere in the code. And that, those sites with that AH designation do specify a number of units. So if you're worried about, oh, if you do the math and you take the acreage and you take the density, well, what does that come up with? You don't have to worry about it with the AH sites because it's already identified in that section. And that came directly from the housing element.
The term you're using there was AH site? Did I hear it right?
Affiliated housing? Is that what you're referring to?
That is what I'm referring to. Yeah.
As far as, so you know, we have Ladera Church, which we kind of had, we're forced to specify a minimum density of 20. It says 20 to 23. But, and so that's done, that's in the housing element. I just want to understand, so that, that site, you know, may be challenging to develop 10 units or the owners, property owners may not end up wanting to develop that many. I'm just want to understand with the zoning code, is there, so the minimum is 20, is that, how hard and fast is that? Is the, can the town approve exceptions or how does that work?
So I can address this topic. So if the applicant came forward with a, with a project that was, they wanted to develop the whole site at a density of less than the requested units, the town could request, required zoning density. The town could approve it, but would likely need to rezone it to a lower density. And that may trigger another part of state law called no net loss. So jurisdictions are, with certified housing elements are required to ensure that basically they have adequate capacity to fulfill their Reno requirements throughout the entire housing cycle. The good news is that most housing elements do include a buffer. So it may be that there's no net loss. You don't drop below because you have an adequate buffer. However, there's guidance that HCD puts out that it sort of walks you through how to do the calculation to see if there would be a net loss. And if there would be, then the town would be in a position of potentially needing to upzone another site to make up for the difference.
Can ADUs be, well, I, I think I've gathered that ADUs can be built as far as I understand on the RMF, the multifamily. And I think also the mixed use, but it, it wasn't entirely clear to me what design standards they follow. If someone builds an ADU.
Monica, can I ask you to jump in on that one?
Sure. So ADUs are regulated by the, the ADU section of the code. We're not recommending amendments to that, that code section. And all of the standards that apply to ADUs.
Wait, Monica, you were breaking up just a, a bit. Could you state that again, the key part about whether the ADUs have to live with the standards?
Yeah. So ADUs are regulated by the ADU section in your code. We didn't work on any amendments to that section. So that just stands as it.
Okay. And I guess, I guess it just wasn't clear to me that, you know, these sections describe design standards for like, let's say, the multifamily zoning area. And so how, how is it clear that those design standards are not for ADUs on that, on those properties?
I think we, we do have a dedicated ADU section in the code. And it's not necessary that you need to note exclusions in every section. You know what I mean? That's not how a code needs to be written for it to stand that we have an ADU section and you need to refer to it. So we don't need to say, these standards don't apply to ADUs, C-section, X, X, X. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we, and as Monica said, we're not imposing any additional unique standards in mixed use or in multifamily.
I guess on some of the specific numbers that Ann referenced, so one that stood out to me was that the shared entrances may serve no more than three units, which seems fairly constraining to me. So I'm just wondering where that number came from or any thought process behind it.
Right. So I believe throughout this process, we were trying to avoid a sort of motel look. You don't want that kind of flavor in town. But at the same time, if commissioners feel like that is prohibitive, we can talk about that. And you can make a recommendation.
Just to understand what you mean by that, like if I think about a motel look, I think about a bunch of individual rooms that each have their own entrance. So to me, if you allow more units to have one entrance, that would be not having them a tell look. So I'm just, am I missing something?
Monica, do you want to elaborate, please?
Yeah. So the standard that you're, you're pointing to is no more than three unit, no entrances of the same upper story corridor. Is that, is that right? I may have the, the wording wrong.
Yeah, I, I think it says a shared entrance may serve no more than three units.
Okay. Let me get the exact language here. Oh. Oh, okay.
Page 36, correct?
Right, right. I, I see. Oh, 29. Right.
Yeah, pocket page 36.
You're looking at the red numbers. Is that right?
That's right. Red number, page 36.
It's ground.
Okay. So, so the building entry, ground floor entrances, shared entrances may serve no more than three units. Right. Okay. So that particular standard is, is sort of goes hand in hand with the standards that require like a smaller building footprint rather than like a large apartment building. The, the intent is for, we have multiple units to sort of break them up into, into smaller clusters of units. Just as we sort of worked through different developing configurations and testing them out. And you know, in previous planning commission meetings, we sort of discussed potential site plans and sounded as though there was a desire to, to break that building. And sort of avoid, say, like a configuration where you have a double corridor and you have multiple units that are all accessed via one entry. So that's.
So it, does that mean that an individual building could have no more than three units? Or if a building had like six units and two entrances, that, that is allowed? The second one, okay. And then onsite hardscape material, materials shall be permeable or pervious and light in color. What is, well, what, there was a comment from the public, I think, about what specifically does lighting color mean in terms of like the reflectivity? But I, my question before that was just, why is that a requirement to have it be light in color?
That standard is aimed toward passive cooling and sustainability and sort of green building materials. This is up for the planning mission and the community, of course, to determine whether this is a priority for the community. So if it isn't, that's good feedback. And we also understand that it could be more objective. Maybe we need to specify sort of reflectivity value or somehow get more specific. So that's also a direction that we can take.
Sorry, Monica, we just need you to lean on a little bit more to, to pick, pick you up on the microphone.
Okay. And so that standard, I'm sorry about that. That standard is aimed toward sort of passive cooling and sustainable materials and sort of heat gain. If that, so it's helpful to hear feedback from the, from the commission and the community to know whether that is a priority for the community. So and if it's not, that's helpful to know. We also got some feedback in the last week or so that maybe it needs to be a little bit more objective. Maybe the code, the amendments would benefit from a particular reflectivity index. So yes, it would be helpful for us to know sort of how the commission feels about, about that standard and any others.
Okay. One more question. So there's actually in both the multifamily and the mixed use, there's a comment about development in very high fire hazard severity zones should comply with defensible space regulations from the Woodside Fire Protection District. Where meanwhile, I think we have new codes going into effect, which have defensible space even outside of very high fire hazard severity zones. So maybe there's some disconnect there. And then I was also just wondering, why does that need to be in there? Doesn't the Woodside Fire Protection District regulation apply regardless?
Thank you for raising this. This is actually something that I noticed as well on a closer view of the, of the code. And I would actually tend to agree that it's, we don't need to restate a requirement that's already a requirement. Of course, there's lots of, there'll be lots of requirements of state law and other jurisdictions that are going to apply. I'm actually, I think staff is actually prepared to propose some different language to address this point. I'm, I am in agreement that we don't need to go into that level of detail for requirements that are going to be imposed by outside agencies.
Okay. Thank you. I, I also wanted to get answers to the questions that were in the public comments before the meeting and in the packet, but I think I could wait on those. Or should I?
Well, if you wish to elevate a comment or a question that is important to you, you could do so.
I guess I would like to hear in general, the reply to the comments at the beginning of the meeting and also in the agenda packet from the owner of 4370. Additionally, from the ASCC, Gina Dixon had comments that I wanted to go through, but I think she's here and she may have further comments and maybe wait on that one. But yeah, if you could address the 4370 questions. Do you want me to?
No, it's okay. I'm just thinking.
Again, why don't we address those during the public?
Again, why don't we address those during the public comment?
That's fine with me, yeah.
Let me give us a moment to further comment.
Sounds good, thank you.
I'm done then, thank you.
Yeah, I have first some, I guess I'll call them process questions. I'm not grossly familiar with California State Administrative Procedures Act. I know that the council, before they can adopt something, has to have a first reading and a second reading. I'm reacting to the fact that we're being presented this with a few days' notice and then being expected to pass it. It's massive. My version, I assume this is true of everybody's versions, has only red line in one color. So I can't tell what's new, I can't tell what was changed in 2022, I can't tell what was moo. And so my question goes, are there any guidelines at all as to what procedures we should be following here? A related question is, we basically had no time for public input. I think a code section of this size deserves to be circulated. So do we have any guidance on that, either statically or within the town, sort of Better Business Act kind of guidelines?
Yeah, I'll start, maybe Adrian can help fill in some of the details. So the planning and zoning law, this is government code section sixty-five eight five four, sixty-five eight five five. Talk about the planning commission's role in, in considering amendments to the zoning code. And at a minimum, the planning commission must hold one public hearing and take all public input. It must be noticed. Adrian, can you talk about the, the notice that was provided pursuant to state law? And I think, I think we did try to get, you know, more notice out than, than, than the bare minimum. And then at the conclusion of that public hearing, which can be continued, so, you know, you could, of course, continue that to a future meeting if, if you feel like there's more input that needs to be gathered or, or questions that cannot be, all be answered in one, one meeting. But ultimately, the planning commission, Michelle, issue a written recommendation to the city council. And that's forwarded on to the council. And the council needs to also hold a public hearing and that needs to be duly noticed and include in that notice what the recommendation of the planning commission was. And then as you noticed, as you, as you indicated, yes, the city council does do two read, you know, a first reading and a second reading of any ordinance before it may take effect. Adrian, do you want to elaborate a little bit more on the notice, public notice side?
We would have liked to have gotten the draft out there earlier. We just, with staffing constraints and timing, it's, it's the best we could do. Our public noticing, we had to provide a notice of the hearing ten days in advance. We achieved that in our usual noticing process. So I just, I appreciate the comment and I understand that it's a lot of material in a condensed period of time.
Can I ask a clarification, Catherine? You're saying that our meeting is the public hearing then, by your interpretation of the planning code?
Yes, the, the meeting this evening is a public hearing. And so you'll, you know, open the public hearing, take the comment, close the public hearing. You could decide also to continue the public hearing if you feel like there's, you know, can't make a decision tonight. That could be continued to a future meeting of the planning commission.
Okay, that's, that's it for my questions on that topic. I may come back to it for discussion. A related question.
May I answer one other question? You mentioned in the draft not being able to see that the track changes between what was viewed in 2022 and today. It is a clean new draft. So we weren't tracking changes between what you previously saw in 2022. Starting from, like, with a new, a new public draft.
Well, a specific example of why I asked that, and then I'll get back to my questions in a more orderly fashion, is like your references to the opt-in section. I saw both of those as I was reading the code sections that we had. And then I proceeded to try to find where we discussed the opt-in section, because it doesn't say in there anywhere that we haven't yet written the opt-in section. And I'm sitting there thinking, if I'm coming forward with a proposal and I can't find the opt-in section and I have to go to the housing code, how many hoops do I have to jump through before I can even, you know, start to draw my habitation and put in my roofs? So I found that aspect of this whole document very confusing. I probably have half a dozen to a dozen situations like that where words are used in a confusing fashion. Forgive me, I was once a lawyer. And, you know, I may or may not take more time to get to that. A specific related to that is this affiliated housing section, which is new here. You said it was brought from somewhere else. Was the language brought from somewhere else or was just the concept brought from somewhere else?
Well, part of the language we used, we just wanted it to, to give it a place of permanence. Instead of sitting in a, you know, like a, a housing element, which is only lasts for a cycle. It's only eight years and then you do the next one. And then I guess if you want, you carry it over into the next one. We just wanted to make it, the program more usable and put the standards into the zoning codes where they should be. So that's why we made that decision. So yeah, it was, in our previous housing element, we talked about it again in this housing element. This is the first time we've actually codified it.
So while I'm talking about that, if you read it, it looks to me like it's enabling the wedge project and just about anything else Stanford wants to introduce into our town. I don't imagine that was your intention, but the language is so general that I believe any major employer in fifteen or twenty miles of us could use that to argue that they want to supply housing for their residents. And I think especially with the, who knows what's happened to it, wedge project, wherever it is, that makes the language of this section paramount, of paramount importance. And I think you, I think you really need to get out your red pencils. I like the concept for the Sequoias and maybe for the church. But the way this is written, Google, Nvidia, Stanford, you name it, they all could, could make those arguments, I think. And I've drafted a lot of codes in my lifetime, probably, I tried to figure it out the other day, probably somewhere close to fifteen thousand pages of codes. So I know how hard it is. I'm not saying that it's easy, but that's huge, especially given that that's there. So that, that, that was a question that morphed into why I'm asking you.
Okay, I do just want to mention that for the Sanford Wedge Project, it's not an affiliated housing site project. They opted not to go through that process, just, just to mention it for that specific site.
Appreciate that.
But I appreciate your comments generally, thank you.
If you read it and see what you think.
I will.
I mean, what, what is it, walks like a duck, talks like a duck, quacks like a duck? Okay, thank you for helping me out with that. That's why I was trying to figure out if this is new language or a language that had been moved from somewhere else. Back to my questions about process. I know that in addition to whatever process we do or don't have under the state law or under our own rules, which sounds like we don't have any, the other reason to push, of course, is the letter from HCD and that, that job, Ms. McPloy or Mr. McPloy or whatever it was, that, that letter that you got threatening to refer us to the Attorney General's Office. I guess my question is, I, I have only been aware of the builder's remedy as a remedy under the housing law. Are there other, is there more to that threat? That threat to refer us to the Attorney General's Office if we don't get this put together more quickly? Because I know that's the pressure that's pushing us to move quickly on this.
Right, so, you know, the enforcement division is taking enforcement actions. You've probably all heard about Beverly Hills. And there are a few other examples out there. You know, in terms of other, you know, penalties, there's, you know, issue of the town not being eligible for grant funding if it doesn't have certified housing elements. There's potential for litigation by, you know, housing advocacy groups. And of course, the Attorney General itself. I would say, you know, we are not the only ones who are at this, at this stage. And in fact, we're actually ahead of others, you know, behind and also ahead. We're kind of mid, middle of the pack, I'd say, in terms of where other jurisdictions are in San Mateo County. So, you know, as Adrian said, you know, we responded to that letter with our, the town's plan schedule for bringing forward the zoning code amendments. And we are at the position that, you know, no news is good news. We haven't heard anything back from, from HCD, that they're planning on cracking down. I'm sure they're keeping an eye on us, but they're keeping an eye on a lot of jurisdictions right now. So we're just trying to move forward and keep out of, keep out, keep out of trouble, I guess.
So there's nothing that pops into your head as a specific section in that letter? I was just looking for the letter, I don't want to take more time, but that letter references a referral to the Attorney General. There's nothing in your mind that particularly jumps out that would be, that, that that matter would cover?
I don't think so. I mean, I think a lot of jurisdictions receive that, variations of that letter. So, no.
Yeah, so, so it's a vague litigation, I might say. Okay, um, thank you. Let me see, I have some other questions to clarify, because again, it was nowhere in my package. The sections of the zoning code that were not forward to us are going to remain the same exactly as they are now?
Yes, and you, actually, we originally got direction from the planning commission, as it was in, in 2022, to say, we don't want to get into things, we don't want to start altering, altering, altering sections if we don't need to. And so we've been taking this surgical approach, right? Just sort of going into the code sections that need to be changed to implement the housing element. So we're trying to be very intentional. So yes, what you see is what we have amended and that's it.
That would have saved me twenty minutes of digging around through the codes to figure this all out. Okay, thank you. That particularly came up then on another question that I have related to the map. The area that's called the Frog Pond next to Corta Madera School got changed to one of the sections that's not in the materials that we have here. So it was a pre-existing section, but big orange spot got put on the map at that location. It was a residential, it was RE two, I think. Let me be precise here. It was eighteen point. So my question is, it was RE hyphen two A or slash hyphen two A slash two D hyphen two slash DR. I hadn't seen that anywhere before. And that is land that my understanding is the town has promised the neighbors as far back as 2017. As I recall, there are probably people on this call who know the details better than I do, to always be held in open space. It, it is a pond. It doesn't look very buildable to me. It actually looks like an Army Corps of Engineers wet open lands to me. I can see it pretty regularly when I go for a walk. But it also raised the question of why you've got your school districts in RE two. I went back and looked at RE two and I understand it's an allowed use. But I grew up in Palo Alto. Palo Alto Code has like a public facilities for the schools, for the parks, for that kind of land. I did see that we have an open space in one of the sections weren't sent to us. So that's a lot of pieces of a question. That's new, that triangle and that RE two and that triangle, as far as I can tell. What was your thought process on that? Am I wrong that it was new? And like I said, why are you putting that school? I think Ormondale is in a different zone than the, than that school.
So it looked, yeah, sort of like a rounded triangle? Is that the little, it's small?
Yeah. At Indian Crossing and Alpen Road.
Yeah, I see it. So I'm just looking at our existing zoning map and it's the same. We did not change it.
You didn't change that?
No, no, we definitely didn't even pay any attention to that.
My map didn't show that. That raises a question, what those commitments were made a few years ago.
As you say, some of the zoning designations are a bit curious. You know, even for town center, it's zoned for residential, but yet we have this town center. So I think what's important are the allowable uses and that we have design standards that govern the uses, even if it doesn't make a ton of sense.
Well, it raises a question of why don't we fix it now? Like you say, town center, schools, open space. If we're going to go through this process, isn't it a bit disingenuous to put our stamp of approval on something that we just know is flat out wrong, for lack of a better word, or inconsistent? Have you thought through that at all?
Yeah, I think it just ties back to the instruction that, that staff had been given by Planning Commission Town Councils. Just, just do the bare minimum. Just do what we have to do to implement the housing element. Don't touch other things, like, don't mess around is kind of what our instruction was. It doesn't mean that the town isn't due for a zoning code overhaul. There's tons of things we could clean up. The map, we could clean up further. But I think it's a, it's a, it's a bigger process and we would need council to set that priority and say, this is a, this is a priority for the town. This year, we want you to get this done. So your, yeah, your point is well taken and it could be something that council wants us to do.
Well, then I guess it brings me back to a, a process question, Catherine. If we're to make a recommendation to council, to what extent do we parse out the things that are difficult for us? To what extent, if, if the direction is do the bare minimum to comply with the housing element, which is a direction I'm not comfortable with, but that's it, I appreciate it. But then to what extent do we list out or otherwise make notice of the things that we think are incorrect or, or otherwise need to be corrected? Correction's the wrong word, altered.
So I would say you could include that and, you know, you could include additional recommendations in your recommendation. I would, I guess, just go back to what Adrian was saying in terms of council direction. They, they may not be asking for that at this time. Or maybe there would be other opportunities to note that, hey, look, in the course of doing this housing element work, we realized there's ten other things that need to be fixed in the general plan or the, or the zoning code. But if, if it's, so anyway, I think it could be part of your, of your recommendation, but it also sounds like it could be raised in other avenues.
When you say you were directed to do the bare minimum, Adrian, were we directed that? Did council do that? Is that what they did when they adopted the housing element?
Well, cer- certain, certainly for the general plan. We had to be very, very careful in anything that we changed there. And anything we changed was just for continuity, again, to carry through the housing element. But I was looking back at staff reports for planning commission in, when you, when the commission first took a look at the zoning code amendments. And we were instructed at that time not to overdo it and just to focus in on the required changes. So I have that in my record. You weren't with us at the time, though, right, Linda? That predated you.
That predated me. And in general, I don't disagree with that. But I think when there are some pretty obvious situations, like a school that's listed as a residential area or a, or a pond, there are some more obvious things, I think. But I'll save that to discussion. I'm just trying to ask the questions, and feel free.
We can do it under discussion, but no, I feel like I've worked on a lot of these codes and some of them are unbearably painful to read and I have to go get experts and even they have a hard time reading it. It's, there's convolutions and even, I think there's recursive, fully recursive places. I feel like once you embark on, hey, let's clean it up, I'd be totally in favor. But it's got to be when we have enough staff and focus. It's a, it's a big project.
I had just two other questions. When I was reading through this, these are sort of lawyerly questions, I guess. Eighteen point one. 18.14.020 talks about licensable services. It's about group houses. I couldn't find a definition of licensable services and I don't actually know what that means. I mean, it could be halfway houses. It could be developmentally disabled houses and it's troubling to me to read a regulation and, and I've read them all my life. I understand what you're saying. These are particularly difficult. That, that was something that popped out at me. I also note that in the definitions section, you talk about accessory buildings and I'm sure that's an old, old part of this. But now that we have accessory dwelling units, which you define in the definitions section as dwelling unit accessory or dwelling unit junior accessory, the use, the general words, use of the word accessory has gotten redundant and confusing. I don't know if you noticed that. I don't know if you thought about it, but it's defined as, in the definitions section is everything from a chicken pen to a horse barn. And then you have these terms of art, the accessible, accessory dwelling units. I, I don't know the solution, but I guess I'd raise that to you as a question, or maybe you've thought about it and you think it's fine that way or it caused me to be confused. So maybe you can shed some light on it.
It's, it's probably unfair because I interact with it all the time, so it, it, it's clear to me, but I, I understand what you're saying. And it's just a historical terminology that we've used. Like you said, chicken coops and sheds and because we want to differentiate between accessory structures that aren't livable and then of course, true, you know, junior accessory dwelling units need, need to be used proper. So I, I appreciate the comment. I'm not entirely sure how to deal with it because that would get into, I think, a larger scale update, you know, to sort of go in and start saying, well, let's introduce some new terminology throughout the code.
People who are clever can do that with the computer and just find every time the word accessory is used and figure out whether you need to change it or not, but I found it confusing. I understand your point. My final kind of set of comments along that line, it's more of a question, is there are a number of places where you in general reference the general plan. I'm generally familiar with the general plan, but my question is to the general plan in the zoning code. Oh, and I could probably dig up a specific example. For example, the general plan at 2307 says all residential areas should be served by a public park within a quarter to half a mile. Yet that's, doesn't appear anywhere in the zoning code, doesn't appear anywhere in these restrictions. And raises the question of whether or not we need to be putting parklets in some of these. So maybe you can help me relate that relationship.
Yeah, let me answer it sort of generally and let me know if I've missed the mark. But you're kind of tapping into one of the difficult processes for planners when they're analyzing a project because there's a hierarchy of regulation in a town. The general plan trumps all, right? You started the general plan. So whenever we assess a particular development project, we first literally compare it against what the general plan has to say about that, about that site, about that use. The general plan, of course, is, is very general. It doesn't, it doesn't really get into the details. So it's usually a pretty quick exercise to make sure that an application satisfies what the general plan states. And we have the general plan, the comprehensive plan map as well. So we take a look at that. So I guess my answer is there is a hierarchy. A given project has to be able to satisfy every document. So the general plan, the map, the zoning code, the zoning map, the town's set of design guidelines, separate ordinances, like we, we go through everything for conformance. And then if there's some sort of conflict, say there's a conflict between the general plan and the zoning code, the general plan trumps.
That's, that's helpful. I had one last question, which was, I think in, in, in your presentation, you were talking about the three buildings, the three-story buildings. I live in a little bit up on a hill. There are places where you could put a three-story building and I wouldn't see them. There are other places you could put a three-story building. Everybody all over town could see them. To what extent does topography play into your application of these rules? It's sort of related to my question on general plan, but I couldn't figure out where you'd go to answer that question when I looked at.
Well, the new zoning designations, multifamily and mixed use are tied to specific sites that we envision developing, right? They're on our adequate sites inventory and we've located, those sites are located rather along Alpine Road. They're relatively flat sites. They're along major roadways. They're, they're near other existing commercial uses. Not in the case of multifamily, multifamily is a new type, new zoning type. So, but at the same time, we're writing zoning code for that zone. So yes, we're talking about these particular sites because they're on our sites inventory, but it doesn't mean that in the future, in a subsequent housing element cycle, the town might want to rezone another site and make use of, make use of mixed use or multifamily. So they can't be so tied to the sites on our inventory. That's not how you need to think about writing code. They need to be transferable. But at the same time, we know that the town's not going to try to rezone, you know, a three acre site in West Ridge to mixed use. It's just, it's not something the town would endeavor to do. It, it wouldn't be good planning to just spot zone like that. So at the same time, I'm not, we're not thinking a lot about steep slopes and canyons that you see elsewhere throughout town.
That helps me. So, so the question then is how much you tie these regulations to the specific identified places we have now, even though when I read them, they could be applied to a lot of other places.
Yeah. And I think it's, I think it's prudent to think through, okay, we want these standards to be transferable. If we decide in a subsequent housing element cycle, we need to rezone this site or that site. So, yeah, we don't want them to be too specified that they can't be transferable.
Thank you very much.
Um, one of the questions Linda asked gave me a new question. Shall I ask it now or? She brought up the affiliated housing and it would be a worry if there were other businesses that said, oh, affiliated housing, okay, I'm going to build something. When I read the definition though, it assured me, it said here and there are the sites and go look at the zoning map. When I look at the zoning map, so this is red page 67 or 87, oops, now I lost it. I could only see the Ladera Church one. Why don't I see that same color for Priory and Sequoias?
You should see it. It's a, it's a hatching. It's a blue hatching over all the prior, prior parcels.
Why is the, I see the Ladera Church looked like a little brown dot. So I was hunting for brown.
Colors over top. You're seeing the blue mix. It's such a tiny little speck.
It's the hashing that I'm supposed to look for. Okay, great. Now I, let me just make sure I, now I see the hashing on Sequoias. Now I see it. Okay, good. So this reassures me then, Linda, that the affiliated housing only applies to the things, they, they, people have to apply. A new business could come and ask. But it has to show up on this map right now or?
As, as it is currently, we've called out known affiliated sites where we've had partners commit to be a partner. So for example, Stanford is a partner, but we don't have hatched sites because they're not known sites at this time. And then of course, yes, if anybody wants to, they, they'd have to join the program.
Thank you. Got it now.
But they could be put in other locations. They just aren't on the map yet. If they wanted to.
Right. Yes, we would need to do a, a rezoning. We would need to take the map back through the process like we're doing right now.
And it would go through, so if some other employer, Google, wanted to build housing, that would go through a review that whatever site that they owned in town, we would have to decide if we wanted to rezone that as affiliated housing.
Right. And so that's why, for example, the standard is a partner, but we don't have those sites called out as affiliated sites because Stanford hasn't necessarily said, yes, for sure, we're doing that. These were the known partners, known sites where the partners have committed to building affiliated housing. And so we thought it would make sense to call out the combining district, which is the hatching on the map for convenience.
I have a few items. I'd like to go back to Frog Pond. I thought that that had been designated as open space. And so it just, as we were talking about it, went back to the minutes of the special council meeting on December 11, 2019. I remember that pretty clearly because I was the person on the ad hoc affordable housing town parcels.
Oh, the town owned, yep, yep.
That ended up being recommended that Frog Pond be included, which was a challenged moment for me. But going back to that meeting as much as I might not want to, I just want to flag, and I don't know that we need to address it right now and council will probably want to take a look at it herself. But on it's going to be easier just to, to find it this way on PDF page 18 because it's listed as page 2557 of the volume.
What document are you referencing?
I'm referring to the minutes of the December 11, 2019 meeting. There was council, Wangert, council member Wangert moved to approve designation of the road remnant Frog Pond parcel as open space with recommendations of how best to affect that designation to be brought back to the council by staff. Town attorney Silver noted the motion cannot be made because it is not properly noticed. Wangert moved to remove the road remnant Frog Pond parcel from the list of possible properties. And it is presented by the ad hoc council and the seconded and it moved 5-0. So I guess the question is, there was a recommendation to bring it back. A clear intention to designate it as
That's my phone. I don't know where.
A clear intention to designate it as open space. And I'm unclear as to what its disposition is, but pretty clearly there was an intention to not include it. So I would ask that we go back and we visit what its status actually is. And if it hasn't been included, at a minimum, we should make the recommendation to council to go and fix that problem because it's now, what? Four and a half years. Yeah. That's, that's right. Like the, like the map, about five years. And we should just deal with it.
Can you just mention which minutes you're looking? I just want to get the date.
Yeah, I can also just send it to you.
He said, December 11th, 2019.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. And again, it's listed as page 2557. And for ease of reference, that's page 18, if you're in it. So either it was done or it wasn't done. And to the extent it wasn't done, I guess we should take this up during a discussion, but I just want to note it now. There, in the document, there are some terms that, let's add it to the cleanup stuff. The term lot and parcel appear to be used interchangeably or to the extent they're not used interchangeably, we should define what a lot is. There are, I was a little surprised about the lack of definition of an accessory dwelling on a commercial. And I thought that we, on a commercial use, I thought we had addressed that in one inclination or another of our ADUs. I didn't go back to check it, but I remember having a conversation about the use of ADU building, leaning to against Rainey's collage. And to the, to the extent that we aren't permitted, are we permitting commercial ADU or ADUs associated with?
ADUs are on residentially zoned parcels. I believe that's clarified in the code section that deals with ADUs. It is, they are going to be permitted in mixed use and multifamily because those are residential uses. But if you're talking about like our existing commercial.
Yeah, I know that we had talked about it and I came across it and.
Yeah. So if it's, I'm quite sure, well, not positive, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that we would, that's addressed in the ADU section of the existing ADU section, which we're not tinkering with of the code already. And so that's why sort of tying back, we talked about previous question. If there's an existing code that addresses it or allows or disallows a particular use, then we, we just let that stand. We're not going into our new zones and saying very explicitly, you cannot build, do, do you know what I mean? Like we're not.
Yeah, I understand, understand what you're saying. We, we introduced the term inefficiency as a new term. And I
In definitions?
Yeah. And I tried to figure out what that was and then I ended up getting referred to the International Building Code and that is too hard for me.
Which one, Nicholas?
Hold on a second. It's under, I believe this is under a Red 141804151. 151 doesn't sound like a code number.
Okay. So accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah. So we ended up with the
Oh, an efficiency. Oh, yes. This is very typical to see this. Yeah. And it is defined by the building code.
I, I, no, it's, and I, I, I went and I chased it down.
Right.
To the International Building Code, I said, in the government code and I stopped there because, because it was a bit too far for me to go and find the.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So you're proposing, we explain what is an efficiency unit. You want that there?
It's too, it's, 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 it's a definition that requires you to go and buy the book the International Building Code.
Yeah. I, I mean, that, that's, you know, a lot of codes are written this way. They're constantly referring to other sections. They're referring to different codes outside the code itself. It's really frustrating. I don't.
I'm sympathetic to it. I just came to it and I said, what the heck is this? Probably that's not exactly what it said, but it's close enough. But if we can deal with that, similarly, there's in 1804, five, 25, Getting back to the low barrier navigation center. So I went then to the code section, which defines that, defines that. And I saw that there was actually operable language in the def, in the definitions section that was referenced. And I was wondering whether we meant just to define the term low barrier navigation center or whether we meant to import the the operable language, which the operable language, which required, which allows them a right. And I, I'm not sure that I can. And it may be they are required by right under certain circumstances, I think they are.
That's right.
But it does seem here to include operable language within the definition.
That, yeah, you'll, that's, that's not uncommon either. And sometimes that's a prudent approach because the government code language can shift. And if you, if you take the precise definition as defined by the government code today, and they up, and they're constantly updating state code. And so we're going to get ourselves into a pickle where our code isn't aligning. So if you just make the straight reference, as annoying as it is, you have to chase it down. At least it doesn't go out of date.
All right. Under Red 32, the language pertains to the intentions of the section, this is multifamily. And none of that is objective or kind of regulatory language. It's all kind of preparatory. It is wondering whether we meant it to be non-binding preparatory language or whether we want to actually have regulatory language that is an intention. So I can imagine that this is sort of go forth and do good things language. But I was wondering if we actually meant to, meant to be, have the language defined.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, this is, I'd just say preparatory language. And I don't see any problem with it in terms of it, you know, impeding our ability to apply objective design standards. It, if, you know, the council wanted, if the planning commission wanted to edit it, that could, you know, that would be an option. And I guess I would also just want to check in with Monica if you have any additional thoughts about this section. This is 18.15.010, the intention section on the multifamily.
What red page are you on?
Oh, I'm on red page 32. I think we could probably, you know, cut down on the preparatory language before the ABs, you know, CD. But I also don't think it's a problem. But I.
See, there's a problem, just looked at and said, well, that's pretty, when you go to general, I think it's a basic thing.
Fair.
If it's, if it's meant to do something, we, to do something with it, otherwise I kind of don't like the language.
All right, I mean, I, I think it arguably does, you know, provide some context, yeah.
Monica, anything to share?
I'm sorry, confess, am I having a hard time hearing the speaker? Catherine, I've heard you just fine. We're talking about the, the language at the beginning of 1815010, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay, so this was, this was written to sort of follow the, the pattern, follow how other zones are introduced. And it's, it's kind of consistent with the way, if you were to look at the other zones that we didn't repeat because there's no, or print here because there's no amendments to them.
Awesome. An uninterpretable answer by an uncurable question, so.
Well, just to summarize, it's just maintaining continuity with the way the sections, the chapters are already set up. They always start off with an intent, an intention. You know, it's, so we're just going along with what we've already got.
With respect to our red page 34, 18.15.050, I was looking at the design standards with respect to the Lederer Church, R-MF-13. And I noticed, at least as I'm reading it, it looks like there's a, it's a three-story structure that's 42 feet in height. How do, how do you, I'm used to having my structures being like 10, 10 feet per floor. That seems like a four-story structure. Unless like there's some really very cool entryway that's two floors. And I was wondering why we didn't have something closer to 30 feet.
This is probably, Monica, I'm going to call on you. This would take us back to specific site planning that we did for the parcel and thinking through how to achieve density with the amount of land.
Yeah, no, I mean, I get, I get that. And I still don't see how it's
Okay, so.
conceivable that you're going to get that amount of production out of that small an area. But even still, if we're going to have a three floors, I don't see why we end up with three stories. And as defined, a story would include even a piece of garage. I don't, I don't see how you use a, I don't see how you get to 42 feet unless we're doing something different.
As in, it's too tall for three stories or not tall enough?
It is way too tall for three stories.
Way too tall. Okay, so the, did you get that, Monica?
I did, I did. And we have discussed this a bit in the past week as we're, we were wrapping this up and releasing this. I mean, 42 stories, 42 feet is tall for three stories, that's true. You know, we sort of, we went back and forth on these standards. We tried out different building configurations. We did try to sort of keep existing height regulations to the extent possible on as many sites as we could. These new, or for, for these, these new zones, to the extent we could. We acknowledged that 42 is a bit high for three stories. We, that's also the site. So right now, this zone only applies to the Lederer site, which is really the most constrained, right? And it's, it's the highest density. So we wanted to just allow flexibility in reforms. I mean, if you were to take it down five feet, you know, I, I don't know that would really impact sort of what would likely be built on that site. It's just sort of what resulted from the standards, the evolution of the standards and the draft standards. At some point, I know there was sort of a concern that we wanted the community to be assured that, no, it's not going to go above three stories. You know, the, the, the ground floor is not parking and it's all residential. So if the 42 feet causes constriction and you want to take it down 7 feet, I, I don't know that it's really going to impact what can happen on that site too much. But we've sort of left it at some point to provide flexibility for reforms there.
So I guess we can talk about that during, during discussion. I just note that I wish my house had 14-foot ceilings or a clear story that's two stories up. But that would be very cool, affordable housing if it were the case. And I assume that there might be a waiver or except to allow for a density bonus that would. But I don't, I don't, I don't get it. I think that's, I think that's what it is, that I guess we're in discussion. So this is a really good question that the ASCC would have picked up on. And I was wondering why the ASCC didn't have an opportunity to review this packet, whereas they typically would be reviewing things like that. You wouldn't have a lawyer asking, how come, how can they get a 42-foot, two-story mess? But as I say, what's up with that?
Well, really, it's just the time constraints on the process. If we had more time, we could take it to ASCC and they could have a discussion and provide feedback. Obviously, they're an important body. I flagged directly to the commission that we had posted the amendments. I sent them the packet. I encouraged them to review. I know there hasn't been a ton of time. We did have one commissioner who provided comments. It was helpful. So really, it's just a time constraint situation. We just didn't get a chance to get it in front of them.
I will keep this as a, as a clarification and you've given it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't have anything further. If let's, somebody else has, wants to leave this an issue, then we should, you know, given where we are, and the people are okay, I'd like just to move directly into the start of the public hearing. If that's okay, if we need to take a break. So let's keep going. All right. Thank you.
If you like, we can start in the schoolhouse, then we can move to our Zoom attendees for questions. Bob, do you want to come on up to the microphone? Yes, we're starting.
If you've got the capacity to put it up here, that would.
129 in the document proper?
The document proper, yeah, it's 137.
Oh, for 4370 the site?
Yeah, 4370.
Yeah, actually, you guys have the handout in front of you from Richard earlier.
Oh, yes.
But I can bring it up on screen if that's helpful.
Actually, the, actually, the actual code is more than, more the housing element language. I'll refer back to what you're looking at.
But this is the housing element, right?
Yes.
For 4370?
For 4370.
Okay.
And what page did you say to go to?
It has six bullet points on it near the bottom.
We, we have page 131 and 132, but you referenced 129.
Does it have four bullet, or six bullet points near the bottom?
Yeah, it has six bullet points, but it's formatted, it might be on a different page. What's the first bullet point start with words wise?
Permitted uses?
Yes, we have it.
You have that.
Okay. Bob, can I ask, before you go into this, are you being represented by Holland and Knight for this matter?
By being who, represented by who?
By a law firm.
By a law firm?
No.
But I, but I just wanted to check about the applicant who may be represented by a law firm. Do you recall, Adrian? We're, we're trying to just avoid conflicts of interest. Have, have you in the past recused on 4370, do you recall? You don't recall?
I don't think I need to.
Yeah, I don't think, well, yeah. Does none of us know? I, I think that's fine. I, I mean, I do recall that, I believe you're, yeah, Holland and Knight represented the, the neighborhood, Jim White.
Yeah, I know that we referenced White.
Yeah.
And I recused myself in that.
Right, but this is a, this is different. Okay, we're all set, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that you have the 4370 language in front of you. Okay. Two or three things. One is, is I'm kind of here as a semi-spokesperson for the Nethers neighborhood, so, and Bill Russell is often here, but he's had a conflict, so he's not here. And I want to make sure that you guys know that we are not interested in stopping any development on, on 4370. That's not our intention. We expect that the property owner owns the property, has a right to develop it, right to do whatever it is that is legally allowed. So one of the things that I noticed in the, on the, the housing element, under bullet number four, there's actually a clerical error. And the clerical error says five-foot setback next to the creek. And that is a 10-foot setback next to the creek. And the planning commission approved it, the council accepted it. And it was actually in one earlier instance of the housing element. But it's not there now. And so for some reason, we're going back to the original five feet, seven to 10 feet that was approved. That, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, I just want to let you know that that's a clerical error.
Yeah, I see 10.
Our version says 10 feet.
Okay, the one that I have says five.
Okay. Yeah, it shows as 10.
Okay, well, I'm not reading that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I took this off of the, the agenda. I'm not the agenda, I took it off of your site. And so I just printed it out anyway. So now let's get the, the, the language in the housing element is part of the general plan. And it's the controlling language for development protocol about that. And so one of the things that in the the application that we saw, or the pre-application that we saw, there were five, there was a subdivision that was four splits, one from the front and then three in the back, three lots in the back. And looking at that, none of the requirements of the housing element were, were followed. When I say none, the setbacks of 30 feet from the street shown at 20 feet. The setbacks on the side were shown at five feet and set at 25 feet. The setbacks in the back were shown at 20 feet and then at 25 feet. So there are a number of things that are in the housing element that were not part of whatever it is that we're looking at, is the application. I didn't know, was the application completed today? Because it wasn't completed before.
No, the application isn't complete yet.
So what they're looking at now is not, not part of that application.
It's what, it's what the applicant has submitted to us in part so far, so he's shared that. It's what you've already seen.
Well, what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is, what I was given, which was a very small version of that, when they're looking at it, that it does not follow the setbacks, it doesn't follow the, kind of what the intent was of the use of property from the housing element. And so I want to make sure. And it says AP in that, in that, in those bullet points, it says it will be zoned as AP. So to me, that's not a conversation. If he wants AP, to me, the housing element says AP, so I don't see that he has too much of an argument, it's in the housing element. I guess, hang on just a minute. The, one of the things that, part of the reason that we had the 30-foot setback from Nathors was this, all the houses along there had 50-foot setbacks. So as soon as you start getting up closer to the street, obviously, it's a differential look. And so we were trying to push it back. That's also the reason for one story being on a Nathors street side. So all I wanted to do was make sure that you guys knew that the housing element was pretty well spelled out because Cara and I spent almost a year coming up with these points. And at one point, I spent more time with her, talking to her in a week than I did with my wife. And my wife and I talk a lot. So I think after all this, all I wanted to do is make sure that when you're looking at the, the application, that you first apply the housing element. Thank you.
I should just clarify, I, we don't have the timer working on the screen, so I'm just keeping, keeping time. So when you hear that go off, that means three minutes.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, good.
I am Gina Dixon, I'm on ASCC, I'm, I guess, sort of a lone ASCC member.
Let me say that we really appreciate your being on the ASCC and being here, but you're also speaking a little bit quietly.
Oh, yes, I can speak a little bit louder and I could talk into this. So I had sent some comments in advance to Adrienne and I think Ronnie, you had brought up one or two of them as well. As mentioned, it had, was pretty quick turnaround for reviewing and providing comments, so. I think in general, though, it was nice to read through and get a lot of, you know, clarity in the new sections. And discussion about the existing code. A lot of information's really scattered. And so it's very convenient in these new sections, how all of this information is compiled together and it's much more usable, which I would just say is a general comment is very nice. So I am scrolling through where I have comments. I, I don't have much. One comment that I wanted to bring up is on page 30, red 38, red page 38, under the.
Under the 18.15.060 design standards. And if you go down to D roof design and then two pitch, there are constraints on the roof pitch that they must be a specific ratio of three to 12, or five and 12. And it sounds like there's some exemptions for PV, but I just wanted to point out that that's, that is pretty prohibitive. And I just wonder if the intent will sort of carry through in the design process. That there's a lot of variety of pitch and style throughout Portola Valley. And, you know, the ability to do a flat roof or slightly steeper pitch. You know, in some of the images that were presented early on as target aesthetics for these resident, multifamily residential units, they had flat roofs, they had elements that had steeper pitches than three, five, and 12. And so I just kind of wanted to call that out, that that feels a little bit overly restrictive, and that it might be better to allow that to have some more flexibility.
May I just clear, you think it's narrow, you would like it to be allowed to be flatter and steeper?
Yeah, I think so. I think just not constraining it so severely. Just for, you know, I, I think Adrienne, you had said increased flexibility in roof form and design kind of early on, and it doesn't feel that flexible. And then I had a, the comment for, I'm on now red page 40, for the onsite circulation, where we were talking about just the use of light and color, just feeling very subjective. And just as, you know, thinking about the zoning code as a set of guidelines that we're working and designing in, that it would be nice to have that be more quantifiable, whether it's requiring a light reflectivity value or specific approved materials, which might just be more helpful as opposed to vague. And that's.
All right, let's get a tap us out for a room here. My guess is we have people who are, who are going to either call in or join us by Zoom type.
Yes, unfortunately, it looks like my screen is frozen.
No.
So, if I could, yeah, if we could have a break, because I, I'm the host of the meeting, and I don't have an admin support that I can, that can jump in as co-host. And so, I have to puzzle through this one.
Yeah.
Oh, is it too late to make me a co-host and I call on people?
It won't even let me. You're frozen.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we, the time is, what, 9:20? Let's get ourselves back together at 9:25.
I would just quickly like to say, if I have to stop the meeting and start it again, I'd just, my apologies in advance. And I would ask that if people are able to, they can rejoin the meeting. I really, really apologize. I just don't, that might be the only option.
Yeah, I mean, you need to do what you need to do.
Tell everybody right now, so they know to log back on.
Right.
We've all been there with Zoom, so.
Yeah, so, so once again, I may have to restart the meeting, and that'll kick everybody off. And then everybody will just have to log back in anew. So, appreciate everybody's cooperation, and I'm sorry about that.
But if people want to come down to the old schoolhouse, you'll know where we are.
Okay, five minutes.
Yeah, a scare warning. All right, we are back on at about 9:27. And my mic's on, so we are reconvening at 9:27 with people hopefully rejoining on Zoom.
I think everything's good to go.
Awesome. That sounds great.
I lowered it. He's sitting here. I'm going to lower his virtual hand.
Well, we've just been going through the people who are in the room. Commissioner War, I trust that you, you've got something to say? All right, let's hear it.
Commissioners, thank you, and staff, thank you so much for working so hard on this thing. You know, the first major issue to me is.
Can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, Carter War, 260 Willowbrook Drive, resident, local architect, and chairman of the ASCC. I'm really here, you know, as, you know, the chair of the ASCC. I think I'm probably one of, only one maybe, people that actually was here when there was a major overhaul, you know, overhaul of the ordinance, and it was in 1996. And we spent months doing it. It took a lot of interaction with the public. It took a lot of sharing examples, you know, of what it meant. And there was an element added to the ordinance, you know, that was about creating parity between properties, you know, and establishing some level of objective standard to level of, you know, to level or create parity between a level lot and a steep lot in its developability. And I, it's astonishing that the ordinance doesn't do any of that, you know, with any of the new zoning, zoning districts. Though, the, the changes that were made in 96, you know, were studied in depth, you know, to, to understand the impact of slope, the impact of stability, ground stability, and the, the impact of floodplain, you know, on the developability, you know, of a property. It also established for the first time, you know, floor area limits, you know. And I'm astonished, you know, that in the multifamily zones and the MU zone, that there isn't a floor area limit, you know, for the residential area. Only in the MU is there, you know, a floor area limit for the non-residential uses, which I, I think, you know, leaves open the opportunity, you know, for buildings to use all 42 feet and stuff them full. I think the ASCC is, is the place to vet, you know, these kinds of concerns. So that you can use, you know, the architectural experience, you know, the site development experience, you know, to, to create subjective standards that try to make things look like Portola Valley. I've seen this zoning ordinance that we're, you know, that you're being asked to approve in lots of other towns. It's a rehash of, you know, somebody else's town. And I don't think they represent what, you know, this town is about. And, you know, I, I could go into a lot of detail, but I think, you know, the best thing for the planning commission, you know, as a team with the ASCC, you know, is for the planning commission to refer this to the ASCC, so that we have more than three days, you know, to, to develop comments, you know, and to make this look like Portola Valley. I think that because we're in the middle of the pack, and there are a lot of other towns that are having the same issues, if the town, you know, can continue to be working in a forthright, you know, direction, you know, to develop what is right for them while meeting the standards, I think there are some good things that can come out of it. I also think there are some things, you know, about the intent, you know, of creating housing that have been overlooked with some prejudice, you know, to multifamily housing. The four to six, you know, at six units per acre, that's actually 7,200 square feet of land per unit. The town currently has, you know, a zoning ordinance called R1 7.5M, which has a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet, that actually meets, you know, the six units per acre. And I think there, in those places where land's butt up against larger parcels, you know, it would be a much more flexible and responsive way to create a transition zone, you know, between, you know, higher density, you know, and very low density, you know, in the R1, you know, residential districts. So I really look forward to, you know, digging into this. This is the reason that I and some others, you know, applied, you know, to be on these, you know, important, you know, commissions for the town. Because I do believe that, that eyes on the ground, you know, walking the sites, you know, and understanding where the town came from, and why it was, you know, why it was developed in the first place, and answer the needs for more flexible, you know, kind of a more flexible soup, you know, of, of housing, greater density in a way that, you know, will answer the needs, you know, of the state. I'll mention one, kind of one other area of housing that I think, you know, has not been investigated at all, you know, is looking at the current AP zoning district and the CC zoning district. You know, AP, administrative professional, and CC are two of the lowest density areas, you know, from a buildability standpoint, but also have, you know, the most areas of parking, you know, and some overlap of parking, you know, with housing, you know, as a shared use, you know, would be a great opportunity in this town without, you know, without creating, you know, something that most of us would wish, you know, wouldn't happen. And I, I can go into more detail about some things within this, but I think that if you could, you know, refer, you know, continue this, you know, discussion, and either have a joint meeting with the ASCC, you know, and the planning commission, or just refer this to the planning, you know, to the ASCC, you know, you'd end up with, you know, the kinds of responses that can either make the objective standards, you know, work better, you know, or, in my mind, really count on the ASCC, you know, to help resolve designs, you know, that actually would meet the standards, you know, meet the design standards of the town. Because the other part that I, I think is kind of weird, you know, is trying to create objective standards when the town already has, you know, design standards. You know, and there hasn't been any relationship between the existing design standards of the town, you know, and these design ordinances. I'll be here to ask, answer more questions if we have them.
Thank you. We appreciate your being here as the chair of the ASCC. I'd ask if we have people online who can insert hands to the.
Yes, we have four hands right now. So the first, I think, is Caroline Betongan. Caroline, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. The reason why we attend these meetings is because they're very educational. And I really appreciate all the questions that you ask. And if I can make one comment, please don't rush. As we discovered tonight, there's a lot of uncertainties, there's a lot of things that are not according to our general plan. And yes, I, I, I understand how staff and consultants work best practices, but I think they don't understand how unique we are. And I see it over and over again, and they just apply these common guidelines and policies that we are different. And unfortunately, they have not gotten the, the, the importance of it. And I hope we will continue to emphasize that. And I hope ASCC is definitely, needs to be involved. And Mr. Carr, thank you so much for your input. It's so helpful. The people on, on the planning commission who have been here for a long time, they should inform what has happened in the past. We all need, it's so overwhelming. We all need to know where we stand, and we cannot rush this decision. So take your time and get as much information, even as I'm a member of PPDS, so we should be involved in the parking. I know town council has already made exceptions and has changed the off-street parking, and it has created chaos. So please involve everybody that you can, and, and I'm sorry, and for the fog pond, you have to consult conservation committee, because we have fought for this a long time, and even open space. And you will not take this away from us, because we fought for this and we have earned it. So thank you.
Next, we have Kristy Corley. Go ahead, Kristy. Hang on one sec.
I can do it. It looks like.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm concerned about parking lots, and I'd like a more complete and green parking standard and objectives. I've read some other cities that have done a good job on requiring green islands, including shrubbery, requiring trees within parking lots, and I think the Willow's, Willow's Commons ended up being a little too sparse, where we could have asked for something nicer along the scenic corridor. So I encourage you to look at parking closely for that, because we do have Hawthorns coming forward as well, with possibly 30 to 50 parking places along Alpine Road, with many trees being taken down due to the fire turnaround area that might be needed. Let's see. I said a lot earlier, but the public wants to know how big these buildings can get with bonus density law. So I want you to start talking about that. If it's, you know, if you get 25 more units in addition to the 50 units on Dorothy Ford Park, are we looking at 75 units? And, and the people need to understand that. If so, then please talk about it. You know, if we are putting in a transitional housing or navigation center, please talk about where you're thinking of doing that, because it must be in the plans since I see it in here. And then I kind of Googled, what is three stories? And it came, you know, I got 38.39 for three stories, so 42 is a little high. And then you have the light spill. And then I want to point out to Mr. Adams that on red page 45, there's guidelines for Nathorres which were adjusted and listed on that page already. So, also, the larger lots often let ADUs or pushed to a far corner of a property. Can you write something that doesn't, you know, if you have 15 acres or 10 acres, and you're going to put it over by your corner. And you're going to put it over by your corner of a fence against somebody else's house? How can we prevent that, you know, when they had the room to put it in a different location? And then I noticed Atherton, and I don't really know if this is right or they're going to end up doing it. But they are putting that, somebody suggested an eight-foot fence if they're going to put it four feet from the fence. Cause they don't want to look into the ADU. I don't know. That sounds kind of crazy, but it's something to go look into for Atherton and what they end up doing with their ADUs. Cause they're opposing quite a few of them and they probably already started writing their ADU codes. And then in lieu of fees, I, uh, we have fifteen percent. Do we want to consider twenty percent since we have a deficit and we're looking to raise more money? And then, you know, when you add in and delete items from the housing element. We don't own and and this document, we don't want to just see a sheet of paper with. All these additions and subtractions and addition. We want to read the whole document as it flows. So if you could give us that document where you've already put in the changes. And then color it with, okay, this is a brand new one from the last meeting. You know, I'd really appreciate that, because otherwise we have to go line by line and go back to the certain page. We just want to read the new document that you've revised. And I think. That is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim White.
Oh, can I say I just want to see this continued? Thank you.
Hey, guys. Thanks for for what you're doing here. Um, I, you know, unfortunately, I do agree that I I think this requires some additional time and study. Um, you know, I think Carter's, uh, you know, comments were good. I I found just my own personal self, um, not being able to really apply it to things that I'm doing here. And even understand whether this works or not. I actually thought Anne's question was great and it, I think people maybe misinterpret. The way I interpreted what Anne was asking is, hey, if you took the Willow Commons project. And use the development standards that are there. Would it pass through fine or where would we run into issues? And I I think if you applied, you know, a couple of the projects around here and just actually. See how that would fall. I think it's a good exercise. That was modeled after the town center, you know, so if if this doesn't really work, then, you know, I I I think that we got to really think about what does work. And, uh, you know, I think one of the things that I actually don't hear a lot of, a lot of. People adding and in looking at this and not understanding the implications to costs. Probably the cheapest building, you know, the most affordable building being built right now is down at the Lidira Church. That's going to come in at over five hundred dollars a square foot on a very simple flat land, as simple of a building as you can build. I'll just give you two examples, and I think there's some things that have to be fixed in our zoning code. For example, the solar on ADU does not take into account a total residential lot or a total project. So you'll, it's forcing solar on a building even though a project has it. So I think, for example, that adds cost, it it drives people not doing things. And it it doesn't even accomplish the goal that you want. There's, uh, gray water is an example that is a requirement, uh, diverters. No one's gone through this. We have with the Willow Commons, it it's actually prohibited by West Bay. There's a policy conflict in what you're requiring. And West Bay will not make a connection because it changes the water flow and the density. And it messes up their downstream processes. This cannot be resolved and the the advice we got was to just put it in and not use it, so add cost. So my, I'll just leave two comments, which I I do think there should be some working groups, um, on this. The, in the mixed-use area, I do think, as Bob pointed out, and and I've seen in my case. There are some things that didn't carry over from housing element approval to what's in the building code. And side and back setback, so I think that's got to get clarified. And then lastly, on the non-residential side, which I had asked for a lot of this last year to see some of this. As we were trying to decide what to do for accepting different zoning. And I I don't even know how to interpret some of this, you know, I it's, I I don't know if it's trying to actually force bigger buildings. There's like a fifty-foot requirement that it, the building has to be, if it's non-residential, has to be at least fifty feet deep. And I I I just, you know, like the little cafe that we're putting into Willow Commons is a very tiny footprint. I think it would be prohibited with this, uh, approach. And I I'm not sure that's what we're trying to accomplish. So thanks for listening. I I do think there needs a little more work here.
Thank you, Jim. Next, we have Rita. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, thank you for my comment. This seems rushed and meetings that could have addressed this issue earlier. Have been canceled, as I mentioned earlier. And I noticed that we did not use the other, uh, contracting company that we use for housing. Our past town manager works for the other company and with a disarray of our town finances, I hope that contract is audited and amended. To fill some of the positions in planning, I will say what I've suggested before. That we convert some of these contractors into full-time employees. And if it's not in the contracts, they need to be amended that way. This document, this presentation today is very tidy and feels like a closed-end statement. Our general plan involves the residents. And this document presentation did not involve the residents at all. Is it possible to have a gathering where the residents can vote or discuss the different designs? That we could support, you know, in our town that we'd like to see, as, uh, Mr. War had, um, had said earlier? And I I really hope that the commission can meet often enough. As, and again, on this particular issue. Before deadlines are needed and not have it rushed. We've been doing that too much for the past couple of years. This issue should go in front of the ASCC next Monday. And be continued with the planning commission in two weeks before it goes to the town council. Yes, we are short-staffed, but I see many opportunities to work together. And get something, build something that we can all live with. Because people live in this town for a long time and, uh, people don't want to feel pushed out. So let's all work together and do something and stop just rushing these things through. Cause that's not who we are, but please include the residents. Thank you.
Next, we have Dave Cardinal. Go ahead, Dave.
Great. Yeah, thank you. First and foremost. We take for granted the staff work that we get as a town, even though we're the smallest town. If not on the planet in San Mateo County. And we have a depleted staff, so thank you to Adrian Smith. I thought, given their their brief, if you will, to try and come up with zoning requirements. Uh, zoning updates by March thirty-first to meet a housing deadline from the state. Uh, it's a massive undertaking and they did a great job. Separate from that, um, I defer to two people I really respect, Carter Warren, Jim White. On and to some, and Bob Adams has been pretty well educated on this. So that I I get that it's not perfect or maybe even the right way to go. I I have no objection to we as a town saying we need to take more time. And are willing to take the risk that somebody will fire, file a village remedy or whatever. Uh, but I I do think our staff has delivered what they were asked to. And now if we want to take another one, three, six months. That's our call and I'm I'm okay with that. But, uh, that I think needs to be a, the discussion, not finger pointing and blame pointing and going back over history. Where we are, we are, we have to decide where we want to go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, we have Dale Fow. Go ahead, Dale.
Great. Thank you all very much, uh, for taking my my comment this evening. I got a few quick points. Number one, uh, what was said about the Frog Pond? Let's take the opportunity to, this, let's fix it. The Frog Pond is clearly either open space or parkland. You've got it in front of you. Let's fix it. Number two, uh, this is the first time I've seen these drawings of the massing. Uh, the kinds of anticipated things you want, quote unquote, and what you don't want, quote unquote. I think the community needs to be aware of that, needs to be fully on board with what kinds of things are in this plan. So I think we need to take some time and have have a couple of open meetings. I think that the drawings were great, Adrian. More people need to see that and understand what you're doing. And I I also second Nicholas's comments about forty-two feet on on three, uh. Uh, stories, uh, I would cut it down to thirty-five feet. I mean, I I don't want anything taller than that in this town. Number three, again, I'm also going to support Carter's comments. I respect him a lot. He's been around a long time, understands these things inside and out. I think this does need to go in front of the ASCC. And and finally, again, please just let's take our time and and do this right and let's not do it rushed. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. And final hand I have right now is Karen Askey. Go ahead, Karen.
Hi, everybody. Um, I I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I thought, uh, what Carter and Jim said was right on. And I do encourage you to take your time. And I have some very minor comments that are really questions. One, actually, maybe Jim can answer, but it it was discussed that Willow Commons was going to be a hundred percent residential. Yet I do know there's going to be a vocational training room and coffee served with. You know, uh, the public and things like that. So my question is, is wanting to make sure that indeed that is zoned correctly. So that those residents do have that opportunity for that vocational experience and customer service. So just making sure that is the right zoning code. Um, and the other one had to do with building height. And Anne, you may remember this, back in an ad hoc housing element committee meeting. Something came up about how high the fire trucks could actually service. And my recollection was is they can't go very high. So that may be another thing that you guys want to research and make sure that we have the appropriate infrastructure. For a very safe building plan. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Um, those are all the hands. Oh, no, I see one new one. Uh, this is Greg. Go ahead, Greg.
Ah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Uh, very good session. Um, I, um, I want to, uh, just, um, support a lot of what the. Speakers have contributed tonight, um, not just, um, the public comment. But, you know, I I think, you know, Linda led off, uh, and made a a very good case for, for, you know, noticeability. And not rushing this decision and so many other of the speakers have essentially, you know, confirmed or reconfirmed or supported. The fact that we don't, we don't rush this. I, uh. Really appreciated Carter Ware's input. I thought that was, you know, terrific. You know, I think, uh, one point that, um, hasn't been spoken to, so I'll take this opportunity to. Give it some more visibility. So Ronnie, I think, brought up, you know, a very good issue around fire safety. And and, you know, building separation consequences of all this development in those, on those three Nathorst lots. Because, you know, right now you've got ten thousand square feet of office space at the country offices. That's all wood shake roof sitting under a canopy of redwoods. You've got the Willow Commons, um, with those, uh, you know, wood construction buildings. And, you know, a couple of those. Fourplexes or threeplexes, uh, at ten feet apart, they've got cedar wood siding. And, you know, the 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 plan that Mr. Thessing proposed today, I mean. Just, you know, eyeballing that and looking at the distances on the map, I mean, they're very, very close together. So I think you should step back and and think about the building separation and density consequences with respect to. Um, building separation and this twenty-two oh five, which was, you know, had a lot of visibility here. Let me just final, finally sum up, sort of sum up on the consideration of insurability. There there was a letter in the town packet this week from a resident that was reporting that they lost their, uh, fireman's fund insurance. And, you know, I'd want to, you know, make sure you know that people in the Nathorst area are similarly affected. And I'll give you one example of a, an Athorst neighbor who, um, is, uh, has fireman's insurance. And 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 they received a denial letter. The consequences of which they had to go out and buy seventy-four hundred dollars of, uh, fair plan insurance. And then firemen's would insure the rest, the wraparound for seventeen hundred. So you've got families in the Nathorst area, uh, without all this development, paying nine thousand four hundred dollars a year. Because they're getting their insurance denied. So I think this insurability issue, given the current and proposed construction, particularly there. And it would also impact Ford Field. But anyway, I I think I made my point on insurability and I've spoken several times before on that matter. So, um, let's take some time, um, consult with the ASCC. That's great. And thank you very much for taking my input tonight.
Hey, Greg. I've got another hand. Phone number ending in three zero five six. Go ahead.
Hi, Dana Green. Um, the first note I I took this evening was that the, the planning commission was supposed to act as expeditiously as possible. And that's not how we do things in this town. We listen to the public and we, we go through the processes and that's what this town is about. And so let it take time, let it drag its heels. We're going to do it right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. That's all we've got.
All right. Well, we are now, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
We're now at ten o'clock, uh, exactly. I'm going to propose that we, I am not closing the public comment. Question right now. But I am having a side thing to figure out that the process is. Now, so you'll tell me when I misstep. Process revision. I'm disinclined to go through and have a review of, uh, specific comments at this point in time. But rather, I'm interested at least as an initial matter to have a conversation about process. I can say just for myself coming in, my question was whether. We simply make a recommendation to council, to town council. That, uh, thanks very much. It appears that there's a legally sufficient document. We urge you to take into consideration the comments of the public, our comment. And do what's right by the town because the process that's been presented. Not going before ASCC, not having the benefit. Except to the moose then, of the ASCC. Or having a full ventilation seems at odds with how we do business and how we should be doing business. The other things that we could do is we could keep this process, keep the, continue the, uh, the meeting, the public hearing. And keep that open. And we could have a, some form of joint meeting with some or all of the ASCC. Whether that's an ad hoc meeting and then we convene. or give it to the ASCC for their upcoming meeting. I don't know if there's time to notice that.
There'll be time for Brown Act notice, but not public hearing, although I, I don't know that we necessarily need a public hearing before the ASCC. If we're just looking for their.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Oh, there was a question about whether there was time to notice this for ASCC. I guess I, there's one threshold question about staffing, which I don't know the answer to, given our situation in our planning department. But in terms of Brown Act notice, there is sufficient time. Normally for a public hearing, you need ten days' notice, but the ASCC is not legally required to hold a public hearing. So I, I don't see a need for the, the special public hearing notice. But the staffing thing is a, would be a concern.
So you're proposing a Monday meeting.
So I'm proposing, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking aloud and looking for responses and and the, hold on, but not just yet. And the other way that I could see this is having an ad hoc meeting with representatives from this body, the ASCC. It would be done in a public manner and work on as quickly as possible, that is, over the period of a couple of upper sessions, maybe coming back, developing language and coming back to this body for a decision and movement to the, movement to the council. So those are the sorts of things that I can see. One is saying, this is interesting. It's not how we do business. Council, please do the right thing. We don't want to take up any more of your time. We're moving expeditiously. This is yours. So that's one thing you could do. Two is give it to the ASCC for a meeting. Then we would take it back. Or three, I can see having an ad hoc joint meeting. And, and then coming back for, for decision. Presumably council will weigh in tomorrow morning and say, really? But there's a, that, that's that's, those are the, those are the immediate options. I can see we would welcome any suggestions.
I, I think there are some realities that we have to deal with. So I think I would come up with a kind of a conglomeration of your options. I think we should set a very specific timeline on when we want to circle back. Assuming we do one of your circle back options, including going to the ASCC. I think we have to do that, to be blunt, to cover our ass with HCD. But also, I think, I'm not ready to move forward in any way with this. I think we've heard a lot of good things and I have my own set of comments. So I think we need to find a process that gets us. So your last two options include process, I think. I, I think it's just undeniable that this has to go to the ASCC. And I wonder if in terms of our mandates, if you will, from HCD, if maybe there's a bifurcated process at ASCC. I mean, I think that there's some really important details that Carter and people like him can get into that probably can't be done in two to three weeks. But I think if we could set up a process that gets back to us in a month with some input from them, with some public comment and some review of the comments that were made today, we could come up with what I would call a compromise document. And we could also set priorities for the frog pond and find a pathway for that. Because I think this brings that up and we could set a pathway for the details that kind of beyond, you know, as a homeowner who hammers and nails beyond my expertise. But I think we could, we could do that in a way that would keep us from what I would see as real legal vulnerability. I think the fact that we're staffed at thirty percent of our normal staff can give us some flexibility. But were I in the shoes of the state regulators, I'd like to see a more detailed process that would say, okay, they're trying really hard. They don't have any staff there in this unusual situation. And I would, whatever we do, I would write that out if we make a resolution, you know, just say we're in this unusually small town. We have this, we've never had this kind of, you know, I'd lay out some of those factors. Catherine may not agree with me, but basically the defense, if, if they decided to come after us, just put it in writing. And it gives the town council cover too. So I, I think that's kind of a bastardized version of your second and third versions. I, I personally don't like the idea of making this subcommittee at this point because I think we need to stay focused on the big picture. Even if what we get to the council is something, I'm going to say, more focused on the HCD and the housing element issues and maybe less focused on some of the more, more detailed. So I would, I'd propose sort of a amalgam of your, 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 your last option, I think.
So I want to respectfully like to hear from our other commissioners. And then based on that, I'd like you to come back with a suggestion as to what you've heard and how that, how that works. Recognizing that tomorrow we may receive a note from we don't the town manager or she there saying that's really interesting. So with that, Ronnie?
Yeah, I, I guess I would really like to have the ASCC input on what's in front of us. I, at the same time, I'm wary of the timeline and also the the staffing limitations and the impact on staffing. And yeah, I guess some of what, for example, Carter was describing sounded like a very large scope to me. Where, I, I don't know, I think if maybe we kept it more limited to just what, what's in front of us and like, when's the change to make it, well, yeah, somehow more limited. I don't know exactly how to specify that.
So it is recognizing that we would have a limited scope, so we would be able to reach in a recognition of the limitation.
Yeah. And right, so if there's a possibility of doing something in their next Monday meeting, that would sound great. I guess if that's not happening, then maybe this should be raised in the town council meeting for them to weigh in on. I, I'm, I'm actually not quite sure I understand what our authority or ability is to, can we sort of refer to the ASC?
Another body to, to cure a matter. Or we can't direct another body to addendize an issue. That would be an issue both for the town manager ultimately or for council. On the other hand, we can create a process that would lead us to do that or give the process back to the council and let them figure it out. And so there's a, there's an opportunity to, I think, make pretty clear that we feel that this is important, an important stop. There's going back to here, ASC. Hold on.
Yeah, so let's see a few thoughts. One, I would really love to hear tonight from all the commissioners what they need to discuss or see in order to make a recommendation to the town council to accept a package sort of like this, so that we have the list. I mean, I kind of have it swimming around in my head right now, what I need to see. So I'd love to hear everybody else's. And then, one, we could kind of see the scope, like how much are we facing and how many meetings it is. I'm very, you know, the town council got elected. They are the ones that get to tell us what to do and what they want to see from us. So I'm extremely uncomfortable with a discussion that says, no, let's not do what they ask. Let's tell them something or tell them a whole new plan. I think I do love the idea of getting ASCC input, but I too, like Ronnie, would really like to limit the scope, kind of like, here's what's on the table. Could you tell us the twenty things you most want to see changed, but not a list of two hundred, you know, somehow limited? And I hear all the comments that people would love and love and love more and more discussion. But I do want to, the flip side for me is the world, in all aspects of the world, there's sometimes deadlines. And I mean, it's a bummer. I hate deadlines. I'd love to discuss, but I think the town council is the one that can weigh the value of more and more discussion, more and more meetings versus the legal risk that the towns facing. And, you know, some of those consequences are, are not going to be PV friendly, right? Or the way the buildings come out. So I'm to the point that we, I think the town council is going to tell us, but I feel like we need to, you know, get the biggest things in order and the way we can live with them, but not let the process take too long because it keeps exposing us to risk. So for me, it's hear from everybody what are each of our lists are that we have to see before we can go on. Probably tell the town council that we would love to have ASCC input if we can get it with a fixed scope. And then hopefully then have just one more planning commission meeting where we wrap up all the topics that we named for ourselves.
Thank you. We have the chair of the ASCC who I'd like to be able to recognize. I recognize, well, actually, the public comment there is still open.
Thank you, Chair. Again, this is Carter War. I'm going to back up for just a second, you know, to how the town has operated, you know, since nineteen sixty-four. With every issue that had potential usage, visual site development issues, the town was relatively silent, you know, on subjective standards and subjective criteria. Because the town fathers could see that you can't legislate good design. So one of their first acts, and it's early, you know, in, you know, the municipal code, was to create, you know, the designer view board, the Architecture and Site Control Commission. An alternate, you know, to doing these standards. And I'd like, I'd like to hear council's issues on this, you know, would be to remove the subjective, you know, the, the subject, the objective standards and continue the history of, of, you know, subjective standards, you know, that would need to be, you know, vetted through a designer review process and a conditional use. This gives, gives the town the opportunity, you know, to review and approve everything as it is, you know, as it comes. It's the reason that large areas of the town, you know, including the fifty-some acres of the priory are still zoned, single-family residential with one acre lots. And it's not going to be anything else. And it's never been, you know, nope. While I've mentioned it to my peers and, you know, to others that why isn't it zoned for institutional uses and, you know, have something by right? It has, it only has conditional uses. And there, there's probably a, a legal issue that, you know, that the, you know, housing and community development doesn't want that. So if we're going to go down the path, you know, of capitulating, you know, to, you know, housing and community development, then I would want, you know, to answer your question, you know, Ronnie, was, you know, to look at those new zoning districts very specifically. Not for what they're going to do to the properties that are already identified, but what they would probably do, you know, to the properties that are yet to be identified. Because once a zoning ordinance is, you know, is created, you create a path, you know, to letting, you know, what some of my community members would say the floodgates open. Because somebody else did it, you know, and somebody else, you know, and everybody wants equal protection under the law. So rushing into this really makes me nervous. But what I could do, you know, can say is that, you know, if we don't need, you know, a public hearing, the ASCC could, you know, could look at this on the twenty-fifth and on, on April eighth. The planning commission has a meeting on the third and the seventeenth of April. I think we would have comments, you know, preliminary comments, you know, on the issues of greatest concern, you know, after next Monday. From a staffing standpoint, I don't think there's any additional staff report necessary, you know, than the ordinance that has been proposed so far and all of the months and years of, you know, of existing information. So there isn't any staff report that I, I can imagine that will illuminate, you know, what the ASCC would be asked, you know, asked to do. And I think what I've heard from my fellow members at the last ASCC meeting, you know, was that we're desperate, you know, to be involved in this and to help. So from a history standpoint, I know the planning commission has often, you know, referred design issues, you know, to, to the ASCC. Whether it was a zoning issue or, you know, design issue relative to, you know, grading or building variances or anything else. So I don't think that there's, you know, any problem, you know, with asking the ASCC to do it. And then even without staff, you know, support, we could come back with a consolidated set of comments focusing on the vetting, you know, of what those building solutions, you know, would potentially mean. You know, coming out of, you know, our April eighth meeting, you know, in advance of your April seventeenth.
I just wanted to offer one additional concrete suggestion, which would be that this public hearing could be continued. I, I heard two, two dates in, in April, but it seems potentially prudent to just continue it to the April third. For some reason, we can't get it together to, we could always continue it again, but.
I, I think, I think that's exactly right.
Yeah.
I think it also creates the opportunity for council to weigh in. We're on track and if we'll be able to take action of some form or another as we're required to to fulfill the, the, the planning commission's obligation, even if that's only a, here's what we're thinking about. It's yours. And which would be unfortunate, but also possible. So I would recommend at the minimum, we would continue this meeting with the public comment to, against the public hearing until the, what, the third?
Correct, the April third.
Until the third. And I think that we're probably in a position to confer with council or council may have decided opinions tomorrow about a process based on, based on what we've heard.
Wait, I'm confused about this council talking tomorrow. They, they, they can't. Wait, I'm confused about this council talking tomorrow, they, they, they can't take action until they have a meeting and discuss it in public, right? They can't just privately tell you, yeah, we're going to do a new process.
Sure they can.
Not, not as a body.
They can absolutely agendize a meet, agendize a meeting before the ASCC and say, this is what we want.
Okay, good, at their meeting, they can do it, you keep talking about tomorrow, and I feel like...
I don't think that that's right. I think that the ASCC or the town manager...
The town manager.
...discretion can simply do it. And, you know, we, we certainly, not, but no, I don't think that you need to have a public, you don't need a, uh, council meeting to, to create a different pathway.
I think it may be helpful at the next council meeting, though, to provide an update on how things are going at the, with the housing element and the zoning code amendments, and so that could be, um, again, uh, you know, deference to the town manager, but that could be agendized, uh, for the, the council meeting on the 27th. Okay.
I think that's right, we, if we, what is the date?
The point I was trying to make was that we should have enough of a plan that we could make a report to the town council on what the plan is, and that we would have enough of a plan that we would have a timeline so that, uh, we could, uh, you know, be responsible to their request and to HCD's request, that we keep moving on this.
Well, that, that's going, respectfully, that's a town manager decision.
No, I'm not going to get into whose decision it is or isn't.
It's definitely not ours.
He's never been to one of our meetings, so it's definitely not our, our, our decision, I, I guess that's true, but, um, I don't know if that's a function he's going to op exercise.
I, I understand that there's a scheduled ASCC meeting on April, I'm sorry, March 25th. And I'd also just note, again, this is not my call, but there would be, uh, you know, I did hear about a joint meeting, um, option, and that, um, you know, if, if folks were available, that might also be something that's, that's on the table, um, for the, the March, sorry, the April 3rd, um, planning condition meeting could potentially be a joint meeting. But in any event, I think that, the, the action, I would, I would reckon, I concur with the chair's, uh, recommendation that, uh, that at a minimum, uh, the planning commission, uh, continue the public hearing to April 3rd, and, um, you know, uh, there'll be opportunities for the town council to weigh in on the 27th, and of course, um, the town manager, um, will be, uh, will be briefed on the recommendations.
Is it possible to do that, and also, before that follow ends, recommendation of kind of getting the run-through from the different commissioners, what we're wanting to have resolved?
I think that would be helpful to staff as well.
All right, so we have meeting on the ASCC is on the 25th, so in principle, the ASC, in principle, the ASCC could have, could have this matter agendized.
From, from the, from my standpoint, Carter War, again, uh, we, we could have this, you know, have the current staff report from the planning commission, you know, forwarded to us, you know, for our comments. Adrian has already asked us, you know, for our comments, but to me, the ASCC should meet and talk about it. So, you know, having that in the public, in public forum, um, while it won't have a public hearing, I, I think that, you know, it'll be an opportunity to be responsive to the public, you know, in listening, you know, to, to their concerns, and giving them an opportu, the public an opportunity to, to listen to what, what we're saying, you know, and developing a pattern. What I would suggest is that then, you know, the, the members of the ASCC, maybe with staff support, maybe without, you know, would assemble, you know, those, those comments, you know, and re-review them, you know, on April 8th, you know, and out of that, you know, send our recommendation, you know, to, to the planning commission, you know, for, for the 17th meeting.
The, we have a meeting with the, the council is meeting on the 27th?
Yeah.
So, it would be appropriate to have at least a status with the council, so kind of report out, this is where we are. Presumably, we will have spoken to the town manager well in advance, but we have a meeting on the April 3. So, it would be, uh, appropriate to take advantage of, of that meeting, particularly if we're going to, uh, well, we have a meeting on, on April 3, so we ought to get back together as either the planning commission or a joint meeting if we do that. And then, ultimately, for the purposes of complication, then say a joint meeting on the 3rd. And then, we have a next meeting following that is...
17th.
17th.
It's on the 17th. And in principle, we can have a last and final, and then to, uh, a reso, uh, to council on the, the, the following, following days, 17th, 19th, then, these are the council meetings we need, and shortly thereafter.
25th, 24th, 30th.
Yeah, the one, one nuance is that, um, it needs to be noticed 10 days in advance, and the notice has to include the planning commission recommendation, and so we actually couldn't make the 20, the April 24th meeting for the town council, we would have to go for the, um, May 8th, under this proposed schedule.
There we go. So, I think that that's a, I think that's a, that's a rough plan that delivers this about a month-ish late, maybe six weeks late. Uh, there's probably a second reading that, uh, that council needs to go unless this is an emergency. Not an emergency?
But not by the criteria of the law.
Right. Uh, so, they would just have to, they would end up agendizing themselves, either putting agendizing it for the next meeting or having some special meeting. Uh, I think that that sounds, um, I, I think that sounds good, and I'm, I'm cognizant that you want to go back and have a limited discussion of, or read out of what our high points are, and I think that that's fair. My high point is, I'm totally uncomfortable with the process, but I am comfortable with this process. So, either we do something like this, or my resolution is that we give it back to council.
And I'm, I'm fine with this process, especially if Carter thinks that in one or two meetings of the ASCC, including public hearing, they can have a crisp document that then we review on the 17th, I'm good with that, because it's got a time limit on it. What then I want to be sure is that the planning, so in my mind, that covers, can I call it all the detailed design guidelines, all these 30 feet, 25 feet, 15% slope, you know, you guys will look at all that, um, but then I want to make sure we don't have any other issues, I don't want to have brand-new issues come up on the 17th, they're like, oh, we needed another meeting because of, for this, because we haven't discussed this yet. I have one issue on, in my mind, and so I can tell you what it is, but maybe other people have issue, I'd like the whole list, I don't want a new issue on the 17th, like, oh, I forgot to tell you all, but I can't possibly decide.
Question related just to that, so we have something from them on the 17th, are we going to have another version of this from staff that includes the comments we've made now and/or that we're about to make? I mean, we've gone through and cited probably totally 15 different sections here where somebody had a question about the heights, someone had a question about entrances, colors, I mean, what are we going to do with those issues ourself? Are we going to get another red line of what we have here? Because I agree with you, having that come together at that time is important, we don't want all of these discussions to fall off the table.
I, I think that's the reason why the April 3 joint meeting, as a joint meeting, is important, because everything should, it's like you're saying, this is my last and final, the answer is, I don't know, but I can tell you that after I see something from the ASCC, I will be smarter and I will have more confidence. So, on the 3rd, I'm thanking a lot on the ASCC, but on the 3rd, I ought to be able to, to say this, these, these are my issues, and, uh, by the 17th, we'll be able to, the one, April final.
We have to be able to say, these are my issues and this is my solution, or something like that, to get it down to paper somehow, or are we going to do that tonight for Ann's list?
I think it's probably worth sort of memorializing where we are, or, um...
Sounds good.
To, to be supplemented, I think, by whatever we send, uh, to Adrian, um, that would get transmitted to, um, ASCC, assuming that happens.
Do we need a motion to this effect, or, uh, we...
I think that the first thing that we can do...
See if we're all in agreement.
If we're, if we, either we can have, I would, I think that we've got two things going, I think one is we have a process that you just laid out, and then you have some substantive, uh, first-round comments that we can memorialize, and we can do that after we have a motion on the process.
Indeed, and, and the motion on the process would be a motion to continue, uh, the public hearing to April 3rd, correct?
It would be that, and also to, I think that we have a draft process, and we'd want to go and kind of connect that to, um, the town manager.
Does that need to be a motion, or we can just give an advisement that this is what we could picture?
I think that, I would think it's important to be able to, if, if we, if we're unanimous in this approach, I think we ought to, we ought to, we ought to memorialize that.
I haven't heard from Ronnie.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to understand, you're suggesting to have the motion to continue it, but then to have discussion about it, isn't that out of sequence? Then is the discussion part of the agendized item?
We're proposing to have a motion on the continuance and the schedule, and then that, I think, is separate and apart from furthering our discussion of summarizing our comments, I guess is the way I'd say it.
I think that's okay, I don't think that it's a process problem, because I don't see it as terminating, I don't see it as terminating the issue, unless there's a process reason why we want to...
Do it in the opposite order.
Yeah, I, I, I think that actually makes better sense to do it in the opposite order and, and talk about the, the key issues that you want, um, to make sure are reflected in the, in any updated draft, and then, um, consider a motion regarding the schedule.
Ronnie, it sounds like we've got it good or put. Why don't we, um, do just that and start with you?
With me, okay. Uh, well, yeah, I, I guess coming into it, I was, I'm mostly okay with what's in here, I wanted to understand the staff's feedback about the comments from the property owner of 4370, um, you know, the, the full list of questions in the public comment, um, and the written comment. And then, you know, I, I had wanted to kind of go through Gina Dixon's submitted comment, which now I guess will get replaced by what the ASCC comes back with, and at least for me, I mean, I, in terms of the scope of what I would be expecting to see from the ASCC, would be something along those lines, like, this is the document we have, like, um, you know, maybe adjust the numbers here and there, but I wasn't necessarily imagining like a whole, large, um, uh, different, uh, document being produced. And then, I had some, you know, targeted changes along the lines of what I brought up in my questions, uh, just doing something about the developable area, um, yeah, may, maybe clarifying the ADU design standards, although I don't think it's a big issue, um, I think we already, I, I think staff's already planning on adjusting how the woodside fire protection district, um, review is, is discussed, um, there's one more. Oh, okay, and, yeah, I guess one other comment, the frog pond that keeps coming up, um, I, I mean, I went back also and looked at the, um, 2019 meeting minutes, and it just seems to me that in that meeting, there was a desire by one council member to, um, designated as open space, but that didn't move forward, and instead what happened was that it was removed from the housing sites being considered at the time, and I just feel like it's not part of the process in front of us right now, and I would lean against trying to expand the scope and include that in the, uh, in the zoning code changes that we're making That's it.
Pardon me, may I ask just a follow-up question to Ronnie?
Yes.
You mentioned the public comment package that we posted for this meeting, do you want staff to provide a response to every comment and every, or were you thinking Gina's comments and then the property owner of the 4370?
Yeah, those, those two specifically. And Gina's probably is not necessary now, because I think it's, it'll get replaced by the ASCC.
Right. Okay, thank you for that.
I didn't have a chance to read all those comments, I saw that one of them talked about, uh, street parking and the need to address street parking, whereas in here, we address onsite parking, particularly because we do have some narrow streets, and, uh, also some of these are on sites where you don't want parking along the road, I suspect, well, Malpine Road, so I, I think there are, I think that issue in particular came to my mind. My second issue, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I don't want to make life more difficult, but I do think that the new map in this packet points out the need to address the frog pond, and I think that that big yellow space of the frog pond and the school, uh, jump out, and, uh, I will leave some flexibility in my comment as to how we address it in the four corners of this document, but I am not going to be in favor of this document unless we have a pathway to address converting that clearly to open space. Um, I, I had some comments I didn't go through earlier, I had looked at, not as carefully as Nicholas, the building height issue, the building color issues, I don't know about that new building down by Ladera that's yellow, I sure as hell hope that's not the long-term color, I've done a lot of energy-efficient, huge industrial buildings, and I know about light color and so on and so forth, I, I have to admit, I'm, I'm, I'm not an architect, but I'm skeptical of that, but I think here, where we pride ourselves on our rural character, we're in an area with gazillions of trees and, and lots of open space, I think light color for energy efficiency, uh, I don't know, I mean, my walls are more windows than they are wood, I can't imagine, um, having more in any of... I can't imagine having more, any energy efficiency with white walls. It's any different from all the windows. But anyway, so that was something that, that I had jumped out on. I didn't repeat it because others did. In this section on multifamily zoning, I feel like we ought to, just as we address parking and the amount of parking, I feel like we should also address the amount of what I'll call parklets or usable space in the vicinity, in the facility, in the actual permitted development that comes forward. Our general plan, as I mentioned earlier, calls for parks within a quarter to a half a mile of every resident. And if you're going to develop a facility here with, with 30 or 40, however many units, depending on which of these zoning codes you're in, I think we have to look at either putting, requiring some parklets. You know, whether it's a ball field or whether it's a slide on those properties. Or alternatively, we need to have a park impact fund that those developers pay into. I, I think our parks and recreation issues need to be brought forward. There are issues that I mentioned with the affiliated housing. Also, one of the others, I think that drafting in a number of areas just needs to be tightened. I think you've, you've written it probably for the foreseeable identifiable projects you have right now. And if you want to write for that, then you need to specifically say that this only applies to that. But the language, when it's generic and somebody else could put in, come in and try to shoehorn themselves into that affiliated housing, for example, was just an example of one of those, one of those locations. I had troubles with and didn't get a chance really to go over it with you guys on the transition issues. I guess at this point, in the interest of time, maybe I won't, I won't go through that. The, what did you call it, temporary housing things. One of, for example, they don't allow parking. Well, how are you going to get people in here if we don't have buses, we don't have taxis? So that, that was a problem that bothered me. If I looked carefully, I could probably find the section that that was in. I, I mentioned earlier the references to the opt-in program and how it confused me. Because here you mention it twice in the zoning code, but it's nowhere else. Just explain it, just explain what you're doing, drop a footnote, I don't care. Put a preamble in there, but, but somehow rather make this stand on its own a little better. Did have a question about the signs. I see that flashing signs, 18.40.030. If I read my writing correctly, that flashing red lights are not allowed. But we now have three or four of them down Alpine Road. I wonder how those came to be. And the reason I raise it is, yes, we need them for pedestrians to cross, but what happens in an emergency? And I don't know if that's way beyond all of this, and I don't even know if that's covered by this. But it is signs, and again, this talks about signs.
I, I would just add.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it, the signs you're mentioning are part of the public right of way. So this is, this is within the scope of private property.
Okay, so those wouldn't count, none of those would count, the ones at Ladera and the one here, okay, good. Okay, I think that's my main, my main comments that in addition to what I said earlier about some of the definitions, like accessory.
Yeah, okay, I had two that are kind of big or would take some discussion. And, you know, I'm not even clear on these, but that's why I need discussion, right? What I think I understand is that on the 4370 property that Mr. Thising owns and came and talked about many years ago, let me say predating the housing element, this is AP zoning. So it had some housing rights to it with a bunch of rules. Then in the housing, the ad hoc housing element committee, which I was on, we talked about rezoning this and getting more housing on it. And so now it's part of the housing element and it has certain rules that it would follow. If I understood the discussions and things people said, Mr. Thising, the owner of this property, is sort of asking, okay, is it his option to use the old AP rules? Or is it his option to use the new housing element numbers? And then I think what Bob Adams was asking is, oh, no, the housing element's the new thing. Don't, aren't those the rules that have to apply? I would like, if that's halfway accurate, I'd like to discuss this and the implications on the homeowner. I don't feel good taking, or I don't think the intent was to sort of take away rights. But I also think the intent in the housing element and the ad hoc housing committee was to add housing by doing these, like, why did we even do this if you're going to do the AP thing that was already here? So I, for me, this is more philosophical. I kind of just want to talk about what, and I feel like this is a planning commission thing, probably not ASCC. The second thing I want, I know this is unpopular, but it just really helps me, is to talk on each of these zoning. What would happen if that project was low income, mostly low income? You know, like this one on the 4370 is, is market rate. But what if this, somebody changed it and made it all low income? What would the, I know it's hard to say, but can we just talk about it? The new setbacks and heights? And I kind of feel like people, including me, want to know what we might be in for. I think the probability of those things are low. The, the market rate's very attractive financially, but I just kind of like to know where the, sort of where those edges are, because it just makes me and other people, I think, nervous. Then on the detailed design guidelines, I'm, as Ronnie used the words, mostly okay with what's in here. And I actually think the goal was to get to more objective standards and less subjective. So I kind of think that's the point that we're looking at. I'm not in favor of rejiggering things like the frog pond. I just feel like that's out of scope and there's other, once we bring that up, there's going to be other things people want to bring up or clean up or change. And we're already struggling and struggling against a deadline. So I'd like to just keep ourselves focused.
Thank you. There is a handful of just cleanup in terms of terms and definitions. A little bit about that is also. There are. I agree with the issue of objective criteria. Because if we don't do that, we're not going to have any enforceable criteria. So that's a conversation about scope, but I think that we would, that we wouldn't have. There are some drafting kinds of things. For example, when we are talking about the purpose of multifamily and we bulletize items, some of them would include issues pertaining to fire, would pertain to rural character, things that are sound in the general plan as, as well. With respect to the opt-in, there are criteria by which, that are somewhere between PUD criteria and CUP criteria that I don't believe were actually ever memorialized in the housing element. We talked about it and I think there's narrative there. But I'd want to see it in the, in the code.
Well, opt-in, we're not going to put into the code, right?
Well, it is in the code.
Right, we make reference to it just for clarity. But we didn't want to memorialize it in the code in case we do lose the program at the end of this housing element cycle.
If we do that, wouldn't we simply remove it?
Then we'd have to go through the zoning code amendment.
That's, that's.
In this, in this town, it's no small thing.
Adrian, I, I, I don't know what you're talking about. But there, there, there are, there are criteria that are called out in the housing element. They aren't, they aren't called out with precision and it keeps on getting pushed out. And I'd like to, I'd actually like to see what those criteria are. Because it's a, it's an essential piece of both the housing element and and it appears to be very widespread for, for the foreseeable, for the foreseeable future.
Can I ask a question about that? I mean, as far as I understand, we're going to go through defining the opt-in program over mid-2025, mid to late 2025. Are you, is it, at that time, perhaps we could put it in the zoning code? I don't know, but are you saying that you need to do that right now?
So the, is the opt-in then not operative until 2025?
That's right, we have very basic safety standards that we put into the housing element. But in terms of fleshing out objective standards, that's with the planning commission and ASCC to work through.
So, so I saw the very basic criteria, which is a great, I see the basic criteria. But that doesn't, so if you're saying that the, is not usable until this point, then I don't know why we have some criteria in now and, and others in, it's, it's kind of, kind of looks like it's offered then.
Well, HCD requires that we put something in to define, because HCD needs us to, we had to give them some sort of framework of what we envisioned the program to be. But we weren't at a point where we would have actual objective standards. We've got to go through the process with the community, with the town, to actually be thoughtful about it. And so we basically just use the structure of the basic safety standards to determine whether or not a property owner could be eligible for the program. But then they would be subject to actual site investigation to prove that those basic safety standards apply. And then they would apply to the program and then there'd be the objective standards that ASCC and PC would apply to the active project, which we don't have yet.
How do I know from reading the zoning code that the opt-in is not, it's not in the set, that it can't have, for example? I mean, I don't know, or that I can't apply now?
Yeah, you don't, you definitely don't. You'd have to refer to the housing element, which stipulates the, the skeleton of the program currently. And then we have our program timelines where we're going to develop the standards next summer and then roll out the program next fall.
So the housing element, if I were to go back and if you would expressly say that it's not operative until 2025?
Yes, that's right.
All right, but if it expressly says that, that sounds, then I'm, I'm okay. The development standards, we've talked about the height issues. There are issues, again, the issue of fire safety called out previously. If we want to to either make that a broader concept, or we would make it, or we'd remove it in total. Just for the avoidance of confusion. The issue of frog pond, I could imagine having a pathway. With respect, Ronnie, I think that it was more than just one member who was saying that we should, that it would be who wanted to see it with this open space. If you read the surrounding language, you'll see that there's a broad consensus among.
And man, the community.
Anyway, I, I understand what you're saying. I think it's broader than that in the past time. Do identify that as a buildable and particularly a municipal buildable piece of property is to invite this chip. It's, it's, it's what I think and it's, it's long past it. With respect to issues of color and materials, pitch, roof and the like. I kind of don't have, and I shouldn't have an opinion about that. But I, but I recognize it's an issue. Somebody who does this sort of thing, like the ASCC, should have an opinion and should advise as to how they move forward with that. And I think that's what I got. So you'll memorialize that. We now are returning to the process issue that we talked about before. And following proper orders of operation, so we're going to go and have a I think it's going to vote. And.
Want me to try to put a proposal on the floor?
Yeah, if you can put a proposal on the second seat.
I won't use the word move, but I will say the planning commission has carefully reviewed the draft zoning code and listened to some public comment and is aware of the correspondence with HCD. However, the planning commission wishes to obtain input from the ASCC as well as further public input as well as review responses to the commission's meetings, comments tonight. Therefore, the public comment portion of this planning commission meeting will be continued to our next meeting on April 3rd. At which point we will have that added input period. In addition, by following this schedule, it seems that the planning commission intends to have a reviewed and acceptable version of the zoning code forward to the town council by their subsequent meeting on April 17.
It's our meeting, it's our, our meeting is the 7th.
17th for our meeting, at our meeting, a final, final decision by our committee on, our meeting on April 17th period. I think that's what I heard. And I think I left the frog pond out of that. I hear that we're two and two on that, but.
Frog pond may come back.
Yeah.
And just to clarify at this point, and I recognize that you're anticipating the needs for a meeting on April 17th, but the, the motion to continue would be, just be to continue the public hearing to April 3rd. Of course, you, you may need to continue it again, I recognize, under the circumstances, but.
I accept that clarification.
Great, thank you. So I, I would actually suggest that you go ahead and if there's a second, take a vote on that motion. And then there could be a follow-up on the request for ASCC, but perhaps you could.
I so move what I just said.
Can I, can I ask a question about it?
Certainly.
Just to double check, so we're not requesting anything per se from the town council? We're asking them to advise on next steps in any way?
I didn't include that in my motion. I guess they can do whatever they want to do, whenever they want to do it, but they're not going to have a recommendation from us.
Right.
I'm open to suggestions.
I'm okay with that, I was just. I'm okay with that. I was just kind of double checking that, that I, I didn't know what we had talked about before included that or not.
Right, so it uses words like wishes to get and intends to review.
I think that's fine.
But I did put dates in.
Because we have, we have, we have dates. And presumably, we will work out a process with the county manager and some members of the council. And I think it needs to be more specific than.
Okay. I'll second my motion.
All right, so we'll do a little poll vote. Commissioner Krasinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopsl?
Yes.
Vice Chair Targ? Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We have further business here.
We have minutes.
We have a report out from, I don't have, I'm going to have to get my agenda.
Mission reports, commission report.
Yeah, so we should have a commission report. Is there a commission report?
Are there any commission reports this evening?
I, I, I have a question and I only, I, I don't function well at this time of night, but I, I feel like we would I feel like we could be a bit more efficient and maybe a bit more targeted if we had some guidelines on what our role is. When I first applied for this job, I was told that the application was supposed to address how I met the qualifications for this committee. And this committee is not mentioned anywhere in any rules or anything, so it was hard to know what this committee does, this commission, excuse me. And I don't know if, if anyone else is interested or if it makes sense to maybe just have a little subcommittee of a couple of us and just figure out if there's just some basic operating rules. For example, my not knowing whether we had to hear a rule once or twice, like the planning, like the town commission does. What, what, to what extent does our jurisdiction expand to something like the Hawthorne project, which is completely a land use issue? And my understanding is they plan to go directly to the town council. And, and maybe I live in a unreal world, but it seems to me there are just a lot of areas where we could either do more or maybe even do less to help run in the town. And we certainly provide an avenue for more public comment than, than the council, because they have a lot of other things. So I, I feel like there's a need there, and it comes up every now and then. So I don't know if this is the right place to bring it up. For example, we don't have the authority, as I understand it, to bring up an item, ab initio, on our own. We only have a meeting when the town planning department wants us to. And that, that's troubling to me and surprising to me. So maybe it, maybe it's not a commissioner to report, it's a commissioner's question.
Yeah, and in terms of commission reports, I've been with you all very, very often, but I, I understand this item is generally for report outs of a subcommittee meeting or if you did a training, that kind of thing. I do hear your, your question, and obviously we're in a transitional phase right now with the planning department. And once a director is in place, I assume he or she will meet with all of you individually, and that would be perhaps a good time to talk about, talk about this. You know, some planning commissions have bylaws. I don't know that you all have, have bylaws, and that's the kind of thing that might be worth pursuing.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I don't even know when to bring it up in our meetings, which is a, okay, thank you. I rest my case. I have no other commissioner reports.
Move on to staff report, staff reports. I don't have any in particular. There was a question earlier about the status of hiring for the permanent planning and building director. My understanding is that we're nearing the end of the interview process. So hopefully, an offer, an offer will go out shortly and within the next two weeks or so. Don't quote me. We should, we should, we should be hearing next, about next steps. You know, when the director can actually start is its own thing, because they might have obligations at their current place of employment, and maybe they want to stick around longer. So we'll, we'll have to see what the timeline actually is.
Who is actually doing that? I have heard the same report that you just gave for about a month, maybe two months now. I mean, is the manager doing all of that, or is there a part of the town council that's in charge? Who's, who's doing this hiring?
I can share that the town manager is in charge of it. I've been on a couple panels myself, and I understand there's a, a community resident who's also involved. I don't know all the details, but, but yeah, this is generally speaking, you know, the town manager's direct hire, direct report, and so they are in charge of the hiring process.
I just note that previously for town planners, the planning commission has been on the interview process. So this is, certainly it's a direct hire, direct report. It's also different from, different from how, how things usually get done here. That's the town manager kind of thing.
Were you, was any input from us requested?
Not, not, I think. I'm sure you've got.
That's for me.
That's it for staff reports.
All right.
I had only some sort of typo comments, which if you want me to, I can send them to you or an email, something like that.
That would be helpful.
Okay, I'll do that.
I'm fine with both sets.
We're doing both together. So on the twelve-twenty minutes, page eighty-eight, it said the motion carried five to zero to one with Commissioner Kopsl abstained, which should be four to zero to one. And then on the February seventh minutes, I, so I emailed you this so that, that I'll just read through it for the benefit of the commissioners in public. So on page ninety-three, it says, Mr. Biggs explained that because the housing element was returned and approved in time, there is now a new set of requirements. The zoning, the zoning code changes have to be completed before March fourth. And I felt like that wasn't a great summary of what he said, and specifically, he didn't say that the zoning code changes had to be completed before March fourth. So I wanted to change it to, Mr. Biggs explained that the state is required to put cities on notice that they have not met the requirements of getting the housing element implemented. We received a letter yesterday saying that we need to implement the zoning changes, and we need to report back to the state by March fourth. And that's it.
He said, what, what you just said sounds, sounds totally reasonable. Is that, is that in fact what you said?
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a summary, so I reviewed the recording and.
I guess that's my question, so. That, that, that all makes sense. It's not, nothing wrong to acknowledge, but.
Yes.
And if you could, I'm sorry. Linda, if you have specific changes, I think that it's appropriate for you actually to call them out.
My problem is my battery went dead on my computer and because I forgot to bring my cable. There was a place where it said I made a friends amendment. It was a friendly amendment. There was a place where it said I would have, I think, ease each of mind instead of ease of, ease my, it would each my mind instead of ease my mind. They were, like I said, they were typos.
So if we're typos, then we'll, we'll solve those given this, and just want to make sure that people, that the public would have an option.
And there was one other that's not coming to mind right now. I'm sorry, I neglected to bring my charging cord.
It's eleven fifteen, so it's fifteen minutes.
Yeah, but I forgot to bring it at six forty-five.
So.
I approve, I'm, I'm moving, we approve them.
Public comment.
All right, so, yes, we have Christie Corley. Go ahead, Christie.
Yeah, thank you. Just to page eighty-two, December twentieth. I said we value the Little League field to remain at regulation size, and six hundred children play on that field from San Mateo County every year. That did not make the minutes. And when I say bonus density law increases the number of units by thirty-three to fifty percent, if it's a hundred percent BMR housing. So if you could correct that, I think you only put fifty percent. Dorothy Ford Park was the first donated open space to Portola Valley that was left out. And you know, to increase infrastructure, we have one bus coming home at three o'clock. And anyway, I'm going to leave that one out. I mean, I just feel like my quote needs to be my quote. And if you listen to it, there's a bunch of sentences left out. So it's frustrating when you're talking and you think you're being listened to, and you read it, and about half of the information's there, so. I'd appreciate exact, thank you.
Wow, this highlights, though, we bounced around between verbatim things, because then comments like Christie's, okay, we put everything in there, and the minutes are so, so long, versus condensing them a bit, like, these are written. But then people need to have every word included, then that's a problem. And then sometimes we've had the super abbreviated where Christie Corley spoke. And so I think this is a challenge to try to find the balance. Yeah, I'd vote, I guess I'm going to vote for keeping these the same. I feel like this captures the gist of what Christie said, even though it's not every word. But you know, if people need every word, they, there's just no substitute for going back to the YouTube and really listening to it. But I'm sorry, I know this, it's not all that satisfying, but I did not like the version of the minutes that were verbatim. I mean, it was just so hard to read.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah, me too. I'd be in favor of correcting errors, but if it's things that were omitted, I feel that it's okay.
I would say that if there are significant issues that materially change what you're saying, then that should be corrected. If one wanted to submit comments, I can imagine that that could be included along the minutes. But the comments should be submitted prior to, prior to the, prior to the meeting, that they would be included in any of them. So I think in this case, if Corley wanted to submit comments at this point in time, that we would include it. But as they go forward in our bylaws that don't yet exist, that, that they should be submitted before and to ensure that they will be collected in the, in the documents. All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion, can I put both minutes together? Make a motion that we have agreed to both sets of minutes with the, the small edits that we had.
My edits and Larned's edits.
Good clarification, yes.
Yes.
I was second.
A second, okay.
All right, Commissioner Krasinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopsl?
Yes.
Vice Chair Targ? Passes.
But with that, I'm going to move that we close the meeting in the name of Dave Ross.
Good.
Thank you.